Hello, the time being just after nine o'clock. I will declare the annual town meeting for 2022 open. My name is David Walrath. I am the town moderator. Next slide. We put this slide up every year. Just remember indoors, no food or beverages except water in the auditorium. There is, you can eat in the cafeteria. We are being televised and sound there. No smoking on school grounds. That's not our choice. Cell phones should be turned off. I'm going to, or muted. I'm going to mute my cellphone here. If I can. No applause or verbal outbursts unless we are recognizing someone for something. So during presentations or votes, we don't, we don't have verbal outbursts. We have clickers. I think I have mine here somewhere for voting. We plan to use them for all voting unless we have a technical issue. You have voter cards that we will use if we don't use the clickers. And if you wish to make an amendment, it must be in writing. We have forms available. Next slide, please. For COVID this year, I want to make a couple of comments. I was hoping, we were all hoping that everything would be fine now. We strongly recommend masks. There's no state of emergency, so we didn't feel that we could require them indoors. So we're not requiring them. Electronic clickers should work here in the auditorium. They should be working in the entire cafeteria and outside, near the auditorium doors. The areas where we know that they work are marked off. And please be respectful. And the reason I put that is I had asked the town administrator to put some words in the reverse 911 that went out. We're not super formal in Stowe in our town meeting, but remember, this is a formal meeting of the legislative body of the town of Stowe. We're here to do the town's business. So if you want to sit outside with lawn chairs and kind of relax, that's great. Just remember that people, a lot of people are here to do the town's business. Next slide, please. So I'm the, I'm the town moderator. I am, will be running the meeting. We have two assistant moderators. Alice DeLuca, if she could raise her hand. She's outside. If anyone has any questions out there on procedure, you can ask her if you don't want to come in and get my attention. If she can't answer your question, she'll get my attention. And the same for indoors. We have Ross Perry, former selectman inside. If you have any questions, please come and ask him. We, we don't have a nominee for a deputy moderator this year, but I'm going to nominate Jim Salvi to be a temporary moderator, which is a very similar thing. And he will run the meeting for a couple of articles. I understand he might be on the ballot for the moderator position. It'd be nice to give him a little bit of experience. So I'm going to nominate Jim Salvi as a temporary moderator if I need to step down. And this is a good time to practice voting with our voting clickers. Nominations don't require a second if, if they're put out. So everyone, vote yes or no. This is a good time to point out, none of the other buttons, the three, four, or five, are going to register. Actually, it'll take a couple of seconds if we could bring the, bring a vote up for...
I'm opening now.
Okay, it's opening now. And if it shows an okay on your voting card, that's interesting. Mine is registering, oh, there it is. It's registering. If it shows an okay, it means that your voting clicker is getting a response back from the, the computer and it's going to count. If it's not, if you're having a problem and it's just not showing that okay symbol, you'll need to go and talk to the checkers back in the cafeteria where you checked in. All of the clickers should have new batter, or most of the clickers should have new batteries. So I'm going to hold this open. We have 108 votes so far. I'm going to hold it open a couple more seconds. What was that?
Still going up.
Yep. So we're just, one of the reasons we're, we're doing a quick test is outside, it, it was taking sometimes three or four seconds for the, the votes to register when we were testing these. We good? I think we're good. I'm going to close voting. There was, oh, we had one more. Why don't we close voting? We had 115 votes, 103 yes and 12 no. So the motion or the nomination and vote passes. So sometime around, I think it was Article 51, I think I said, we're going to have Jim moderate the meeting for a couple of articles. Next slide. Oh, and behind me, we have Linda Hathaway. Our assistant clerk is up here. Linda's the clerk of the meeting. And we have Ron Eld, who's running the voting computer. He's the town IT expert. Next slide, please. In front of the meeting, we have the select board, currently just four members, along with our town administrator and our town council, who's not on this list, but he'll, his name will be up shortly. Next slide. We also will be in some cases hearing from the finance committee and the capital planning committee. They're sitting towards the front of the auditorium. Next slide, please. We have a number of town and district employees who may address the meeting. By law, most of these, or by charter, most of these have the right to, but we vote them in. So we're going to do another vote, all in favor of allowing these people to address the meeting. Just a second, we need to, can we open voting? Open, okay. All in favor of these non-voters being able to address the meeting, please vote yes. And if you disapprove, please vote no. And we'll give it another 10 seconds or so. And about five more seconds. And I think we can close voting. And that passes 106 to 6. Next slide, please. We also have a consultant who is, who the library project wishes to address the meeting and they're a non-voter. So I'm going to take a separate vote for that. And can we, I'm, I'm going to actually do something different. I'm going to vote by card for this. So all in favor of allowing Ben Utes to address the meeting, please raise your cards. And all opposed, please raise your cards. And how did that go outside, Alice? So I'm going to call that clearly a majority and Ben Utes is permitted to address the meeting. Next slide. We have some slides of people who have retired and passed away. These are all town officials who have passed away in the last year. Sad to see. I think I know all of these people pretty well. I was asked if I could not wear my mask when I'm speaking. It's hard to hear. So next slide, please. We have a number of resignations. I'd like to thank publicly all of these people who have served on town, on, on town committees or as employees of the town. And next slide. We had a number of people that have declined being reappointed in the last year. And again, thanks to all of these people for their service to the town. And then finally, next slide. A number of elected officials did not seek reelection. And again, thank you all for your service. And next slide. Town meeting is being recorded by Stowe TV and it will be replayed several times. Next slide. We'd like to thank Stowe TV, the checkers and assistant moderators, Ron, the IT director, and I'll throw in the town administrator spent, and the town clerk, who spent a lot of time getting the clickers working the last couple of days. My daughter actually volunteered to run the presentation computer. And special thanks to the various offices in town that have put in hundreds of hours, I think, over the last several weeks, putting this meeting together. Next slide. So for debate, we do expect respectful debate. Like I said, no, no clapping or booing or, or things. You identify yourself when you speak. I'm David Walrath, 30 Samuel Prescott Drive is how I introduce myself at a microphone if I wanted to speak on an article. Keep all your comments to the motion being debated. We don't allow off-topic. All questions are directed to the moderator up here and the moderator will, will assign someone to answer the question. Avoid being repetitive. I'm keeping the time limit to two minutes because of COVID. You'll have to talk to a future moderator whether that gets moved back to a three-minute limit. If you feel anything useful has been said, you can move to end debate, often called call the question. At 30 minutes, the moderator will ask if anyone in the meeting wishes to jump to the front of the line between speakers to call the question. There's a town meeting handbook. I thought I had one up here. They're out in the hallway. If you have any questions on how to do things at town meeting, that's a pretty good guide. We're actually run mostly by town meeting time, but the, the town meeting guide is a little easier than a 200-page book. And if you have any questions about policies and procedures, you can ask Ross or Alice or get my attention. If they can't, if Ross or Alice can't answer your question, they'll get my attention and get it answered. And next slide. And we're done. So we're ready for the first motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the... Reading of the warrant and return of the constable thereof be waived but made a part of the record of this meeting and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter instead of reading each article in its entirety.
We have a motion and a second. Are we ready to take a vote? Do we have any debate, I should ask? And I'm going to give it about 10 more seconds. And I think we can close debate. You're not getting what out there? I'm sorry, what's the, what's the? You're not getting a signal? Just a sec, folks inside, I'm going to check. Nope. So people that aren't, that their votes are not counting will probably have to have you talk to the checkers and have your, your electronic voter switched. It might be just the batteries aren't strong. Sometimes it takes a few seconds. Okay. So I'll keep the voting open for 30 seconds each time we do a vote. So anyways, we can close voting. Yep, we can close. And 125 voters voted yes and two no, so that motion passed and I thank you for not making me read all the, all the warrant articles. Next slide, next motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the reports of the select board and other officers and committees of the town as printed in the 2021 annual town report.
We have a motion and a second. This is Article 1 in the warrant. Is there any debate? Nope, we don't need, we don't need that one yet. Well, you can keep it up. Seeing no debate, we can open voting. And voting is open and it will stay open for 30 seconds. And about five more seconds. And we can close voting. And we have 125 yes and one no, so we, I will declare that as passed. Article 2, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the reports of the special committees as written in the 2021 annual town warrant.
So we had a motion. Do we have a second? We had a motion to accept the town reports under Article 2. Your, your microphone was not working. At least I didn't hear. But we had, we have a motion and a second. So is there any debate? And seeing none, we can open voting. And about five more seconds. And we can close voting. And by a vote of 125 in favor and three against, the motion passes. Do we have a motion for Article 3?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Article 11 of the general bylaws of the town personnel administration by deleting from Section 20H the existing salary schedules and inserting in place thereof the new schedules as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any, any debate or, that includes questions? Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote and voting is open. And while we're waiting, I've actually voted a couple of times. Traditionally, the moderator doesn't vote because it looked really awkward, the moderator voting yes or no on articles. It'd be inappropriate because I'm supposed to be very neutral, but I've been playing with my voting clicker to, to see that it works. And I think we are ready to close voting. Yep. So we can close and... By a vote of 125 to nine, the motion passes. Under Article 3. Now Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $31,408,624 as recommended by the town administrator for items 1 through 81 inclusive as printed in the warrant under the column entitled Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Town Administrator Recommend. Each item to be considered a separate appropriation for the purposes designated and the same to be expended only for such purposes.
So we have a motion and a second for Article 4. What we do here, and as the, the motion said, is I'm going to go through the, the budget line items and I'll ask if anyone wants to hold them for individual debate or vote. I'll probably ask if you just have a simple question and we can, so we don't have to hold it. But, yes.
Hi. I think I'm supposed to state my name. Trish Crawford, 34 Harvard Road in Stowe. I have a question on the budget, so I don't...
Well, we're not ready for debate on the budget.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I just don't want it to pass.
Well, you can ask your question. Go ahead.
I have a question about how it's printed in the, the information that's been presented. When we look online at the budget, there were line items for each salary and some of them seem to have significant increases.
Yes, there's a reason for that. There's a budget report in the beginning of your warrant, but I was going to ask the town administrator to say a few words to explain why that happened in the budget. And there's a reason for that if...
Good morning.
You're not on.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Yes, so for those of you who were here last year and have been at the previous town meetings, the town approved an education incentive last year was $145,000. That was a separate warrant article. And as we discussed at last year's town meeting, that would be incorporated into the individual salary line items to be more transparent and to show our voters what the salaries really are instead of hiding that in a separate article. In addition, last year, we... We implemented new salary schedules and a classification plan and the cost of that was $80,000. So this year, within the line item budgets, there is $225,000 that was approved to be incorporated last year through warrant articles. I can tell you that if you read the report in the beginning, no one got anything over and above. There were no salary increases other than the regular step increases and a COLA. Everything else is the education incentive, which did go upwards of 15% per employee.
In the budget that was available online, there were salary increases, some of them 25% or more.
Yes, because it's not just a salary increase of one person. It's taking those education incentives, putting them in the salary lines. Some of them have multiple employees in those budget lines. Nobody got huge increases. The net of the increases is minimal when you look at the articles in the budget last year to the articles in the budget this year.
Well, then it's not transparent because there was a line item for some things that were literally 25 to 50%. So it needs to be broken down more so that there's transparency. Because I can tell you in the private industry, percentage increases are very small.
So what, what the town administrator pointed out is for 26 years, there's been an educational incentive program where employees get a 5% increase, a 5% bonus in their annual salary. If they have an associate's degree, a 10%. If they have a bachelor's degree, and a 15% if they have a master's degree. That's, for the 26 years, that's been held in a separate warrant article and doesn't show up in the departmental salary budgets, even though they were, they are part of the, that employee's salary that they get every, every month. This year, the town administrator chose to take the, the, the jump and break up that, that educational incentive line item where a whole bunch of departments, people were getting salary out of that line item, not showing up in the omni-budget that you see here, per line item, and put that in the line item.
I understand what you're saying. I appreciate your speaking to try and clarify that. What I'm saying is that it should be broken down more in, in greater depth because it's unclear. It looks, when you look at the total budget online, it looks like a significant increase for an individual person. If that's not the case, that's great, but it's not clear when you look at the budget.
So we have the, the chairman of the board of selectmen would like to say a couple of words.
I just want to point... Sorry, it's coming and going. Page eight explains again what, what the town administrator just explained. Next year, when we see the salaries, they will look back to what we're used to seeing. And it was, if you look through the entire budget, that incentive line is no longer there. So we're saving that money on that line and it's now part, because it's always been part of each individual employee's salary. I know it's confusing, but...
I think the comment was maybe we could have called out where the, where the money was specifically going to in the budget at this point. That's...
Right, that's the point, that it looks like a lump sum that's much greater than they're saying.
Correct. All right. So I'm going to, I'm going to go through the, the line items and let me know, this is one of the few places that you can call out from your, your seats whether or not you want to hold something. You don't have to come to the microphone. So I'll start with line items two through eight. Town administration and town moderator. Any of those are we holding? Articles, line items nine through 11, finance committee. Articles, line items, I keep saying articles, sorry. Line items 12, 13, and 14, the town accountant. Line items 15, 16, and 17, the assessors. Line items 18, 19, and 20, the treasurer collector. Line items 21 and 22, the IT budget. Line item 21, is it a quick question or do you want to hold it for debate? You, you, could you come to, come to the mic or just speak, speak up?
I'm Susan Coles from 127 Boxborough Road. A question about holiday lighting. I'm just wondering why.
I will hold that. That's actually a different line item later on, but the IT budget is computer stuff. But I'll remember that and someone remind me if I do, if I don't remember it. So we're not holding 21 and 22. Town clerk, line items 23 through 26. Any holds? Question or hold for debate? All right, we'll hold it. So we're holding line item 25 on that first line, please. What's that? Okay. You can go from presentation mode. You can go from presentation mode. And I'm throwing my microphone on the floor. So 25. And was there any others to hold in 23 through 26? 27 through 29, the conservation commission. Any holds? The planning board, 30 through 32. Board of appeals, 33 and 34. Municipal building expenses, 35 and 36. 37, town reports. The police department, 38 through 40. The fire department, 41 through 43. The building department, 44 through 46. The highway department, 47 through 50. Municipal lighting and gas and diesel expenses, 51 and 52. The cemetery department, 53 through 55. The health department, 56 through 59. Council on Aging, 59 through 61. The veterans department, 62 and 63. The library department, 64 through 66. The recreation commission, 67, 68, and 69. Lake Boone Commission, line item 70. The historical commission, 71 through 73. Insurance, 74 and 75. And telephone, 76. Then the Shoba Regional School Assessment, 77.
Hold.
Hold for debate?
Yes.
Okay. Minuteman Tech Assessment, 78.
Hold.
So we have a hold for that. The long-term principal, 79. Bonds, 80 and 81. And I'm sorry, we did have a request for the lighting. Is that a special article, I think?
Yes.
That's a special article later, the holiday lighting. So that will be debated separately. That's a separate article, correct. So we have holds on line items 25, 77, and 78, and no holds on the others. So I'm going to take a vote on line items 1 through 81, except for line items 25, 77, and 78. Is that clear? So we're going to go on and discuss and vote on those line items separately. So we can open voting. And I'm going to hold this, and voting is open, I'm going to hold it open for at least 30 seconds, because this is the biggest item in the budget. And about 10 more seconds. And again, if you're outside, please remember you need to stay within the cones. That's roughly where we know that the clickers will work. If you wander outside that area, we can't guarantee that you're going to get any signal. And I think we can close. Okay.
Can I close? It's not freezing.
Do you have a minute or two to do? Just make sure everything seems okay and that we don't do a problem. We have 170 people checking in.
Okay.
Good? All right, we're good. And at 153 yes and 7 no, all those line items pass. And we'll take a motion for line item, well, we'll just take line item 25, because we already have a motion on the budget. So what was the question or debate on line item 25?
Rick Lent, 154 Taylor Road and Sustainable Stowe. I'm asking essentially, there's nothing wrong with this article as written, except it's the only mention of water in any way, shape, or form that I can find in the warrant, and yet we still have a big PFAS issue in town. We're still having bottled water delivered.
I'm sorry, you held election wages.
There's, I've got the wrong article. Oh, shoot. I'm sorry, apologies.
So we'll open, do we have a vote ready for line item 25?
Hello? Oh.
We'll open voting for line item... Oh, yes, we do have a question.
Yes, I have a question. Susan Coles, 127 Boxborough Road in Stowe. I've had water tested three times each time. Oh, what?
We're not there yet.
Oh, for Pete's sake. You guys, you're talking about water and this is water testing?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. You need to get closer to the microphone.
About the water.
Oh, no, it isn't water. But we will open voting for line item 25, election wages, now. Yep. And we'll hold it open for 30 seconds while we're waiting. I'll recommend for water issues to either privately discuss with the town administrator or bring it up to the selectman. I'm sure the selectman would be...
It's Article 25.
Oh, Article 25. Oh, okay. Article 25 will be debated later in the meeting. And we have about 10 more seconds on voting. We might hold it open a little bit longer, because we're slowly getting votes in. And again...
Okay. Dave Ossenall, 12 Hastings Street. Why does it go from 0 to 28,000? That's what everybody's asking.
Well, we're already voting line item 25. So if you have... That's a good question, though. But go ahead.
So while we're voting, I will answer. So it's not going from zero. Usually it's incorporated in the other wages line item. Again, in an effort to be transparent, we wanted to separate that out, because the number of elections per year fluctuates, and we don't want you to just see that line item going up and down without an explanation. So there are three, right now there are three elections in our next fiscal year, so that accounts for the wages of them.
And we can close, we're still getting some votes in. Just got one in. I think we can close voting on line item, budget line item 25. And at a vote of 131 to 6, line item 25 passes. We're going to do a presentation, if we could bring it up for the, I think we're, Neshoba is the next one. Yeah, line item 77, we have a presentation from Neshoba for this one.
For folks outside, the presentations are all on the Stow Town website, and you should be able to view them on your favorite devices. And do we have someone to speak on Neshoba? Ah, there we go. Oh, sorry, we have a bad knee.
Right there is perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Kirk Downing. I am the superintendent of the Neshoba Regional School District. Thank you for having me here today. The cane is far more dramatic than it really is. Hopefully, we'll have that knee correction done, and I'll have a bionic one later this afternoon.
A little closer to the mic, please.
Thank you. Thank you again for coming out today. It's my pleasure. I want to say it's been a great honor this year to be your superintendent for the Neshoba Regional School District, and the warm welcomes and connection I've felt to the community thus far this year has been tremendous. I have a brief presentation to show tonight, and it does present data for all three of our towns in the school district, so that you can build some relative context to some of these numbers. So I'll just dive right into it for your education here. So here is the budget. You'll see the actual budgets from FY '21 and the voted budget at FY '22. And this year, we are looking for a total budget of just over $62 million. And you can see it's broken down through, the revenue sources are broken down through our assessments, state aid, and local revenue. Next. Here are the drivers, and you can see, as we look down the drivers, there are some significant changes. You'll often see special education have some large swings, and that's based upon the needs of the students that are in our school system. And so we see a decrease in some of those needs because of students who are aging out past the age of 22, that have highly specialized programming. And then you'll also notice in the facilities department, an increase in costs. These are direct energy costs. We're seeing, like everybody else, you can see it at the gas pump. But that gives you a sense of the change with an overall change of the total budget of 5.25%. This is just to give you context of year-over-year changes to the budget. Next slide. So in a proposed budget of $62 million, we have to look at the high school debt. That is, we're actually still paying on some of the debt from the renovation that was done, boy, 25 years ago, in the theater spaces and gym spaces. So, and it also includes the $1.5 million feasibility payment that we are, as we're looking at that high school building project. So that, the assessment for that is crafted through the regional agreement. Our local revenue comes in at 12 million, which means our total assessment is left at $49 million that goes to our three towns. And it is two mechanisms that make up how that is divvied up. One is determined strictly by the state, and the other is determined by our regional agreement. So you can see the minimum local contribution, that is determined by the state. That's 28 million, leaving the balance of 21 million for us to fund as our variable assessment. So the minimum local contribution, these are numbers that are dictated by the House, and you can see that here, the town of Stowe, the minimum local contribution for the next year is $10,534,000. And that number is used in some terms as the wealth factor of the town, and it's a relative number that, and you'll see how that changes over time. But it is the value of property in your town, as well as the median household income, are used in the calculations that the state does. So these numbers are not determined by the school district or the regional agreement at all. They're mandated by the state.
Next.
So if you look at the minimum local contribution over time, you will see that Stowe's minimum local contribution, as determined by the state, has remained relatively flat, with an increase actually in this past year, compared to the towns of Bolton and Lancaster have experienced more of an increase over the past couple of years. So what that means is, the relative wealth of the town from that fixed point in time has remained flatter in Stowe than it has in the other two towns.
Next slide.
So with our variable assessment, these, this is determined based on enrollment in our schools for our three towns, and it is used on a five-year aggregate. So when we look at those numbers, you can see Stowe this year, their variable assessment is $7.8 million.
Next slide.
This gives you a sense of the change over time in the variable assessment, and it looks similar to what the state graph looks like. The Stowe numbers are remaining relatively flat over time, with some increase in the past year. And then we can see that the other towns have been increasing at a greater rate. This is due to some enrollment factors, and it is not based upon necessarily, there is a factor of students going to Minuteman. But actually, when we dive into that data, the census, in other words, the population of school-aged children in the town of Stowe the last five years has been decreasing. What I mean by school-aged children, it's eligible children, children ages 5 through 17 that reside in Stowe. They may go to private school, they may go to charter schools, they may go to NRSD. But that population has been slightly decreasing over the last few years. So that would explain why we've remained flat in the variable assessment based on the regional agreement, because you are a portion, roughly 1/3 of the enrollment, but your share has been shrinking relatively to Bolton and Lancaster.
Next slide.
So when we add up our total assessments of the fixed minimum local contribution as required by the state, the variable assessment, as in the regional agreement, and then the debt assessment for the high school, the town of Stowe comes to approximately $18.5 million.
Next slide.
And here's a look of what your total assessment looks like over the last five years. And it's my understanding, there's been some debate about that, because two of the last four years, that assessment has actually gone down as opposed to have gone up. I've given several presentations this year to the school committee, to the joint finance committees of the three towns, as well as our budget and warrant committee, and as well as the regional agreement committee meeting, to explain how these impacts of enrollment changes and of the wealth factor as determined by the state of Massachusetts has impacted the calculation of that total assessment. So these are all through the fixed agreements that we have in the enrollment of students that are in town. And so this year, to reach our budget, to deliver the services in our school, the increase for the town of Stowe is still the lowest amongst the three towns at 2.64%.
Next slide.
So some new positions, they're actually not new FTE, full-time equivalencies in terms of positions, they're actually reallocations of positions. So a .5 special education moderate disabilities teachers needed at center, and we've reallocated some staffing within center to provide that. The .4 behavior specialist, that's the BCBA, for Florence Sawyer School, and a .5 increase in school psychologist in the district. And we're able to do that by gathering FTE in places where some of our enrollment is down to pay for that. So we're not asking for any additional dollars to the budget for new positions this year. And I believe that's it. Next slide. And Mr. Moderator, that'll complete the presentation.
Should we have any questions on the budget? Yes, sir, over here.
Yes. I'm Mark Jones. I am from 203 Boxborough Road. Can you describe the amount of money that has been devoted to paying for OPEB expenses in the current year's budget? And can you describe the current year's liability for OPEB in the coming year?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to ask Ms. Maroni to come up here. I can give you some basics, and of course, she's the expert in the detail. We are funding OPEB at a low rate of $50,000 this year. It is a $58 million total liability to the school system. If we were to begin to pay that down over 30 years now, it would be an additional increase to the Stowe budget of over $800,000. So this is one of the things that we know in the school systems, particularly regional districts, that is a problem all across the state. And what I can tell you is that I'm working with our school committee, our budget and warrant committee, and we're going to go into a deep study about what are we going to do in terms of closing that OPEB liability over the future years. So that... So that work is going to begin this summer and be a feature of our presentations next year, but I'll offer it to Ms. Maroni to provide more detail.
Our current liability for OPEB is just over $57 million, and that's the mid-cycle valuation for our assessment for fiscal year '22. And again, as the superintendent said, if we were to fund that over a 30-year period for the town of Stowe, it would be $857,000 that we would have to add to our assessment in order to cover that, and would have to be also the agreement of the other two towns to do that. Thank you.
Yes, over here.
Pam Weathers, 89 West Acton Road. So I have a question that's very different. It has to do with transportation. I always see parents lining up to pick up their kids, drop off their kids, and yet we have a school bus system. I would like to know, given the problems with fuel and the concern on our environment, what kinds of incentives are being planned so that the school can either reduce the bus input because of all the parents using their own personal vehicles, or incentivize parents not to do this so much, so that we minimize the fuel pollution that occurs from all these vehicles? I would like to know that there's something being done towards this, because this is not sustainable.
That's a good question, and I think it's a question that also reaches across the community. It is not an independent question to the school system. I will tell you, as a result of COVID, everywhere, the number of people driving their kids to school has gone up dramatically, dramatically. People want it because they don't want, some folks don't want their students to be on the bus in close proximity to others. So combating that certainly is going to be a challenge in terms of what we can do there. So I invite anyone to continue to work with us. We don't have a formalized plan in terms of incentivizing people to put their students on the bus. We have regulations around regional transportation. As a regional school system, we get a percentage of reimbursement for providing transportation. And so that's based upon our needs and the number of buses that we need and the percentage of which the state can hold, of which this past year, I believe, Ms. Maroni, was 85%. So, but in terms of incentivizing, we don't have a plan, but I know our school committee representatives are here today and heard your question, and that is something I think we can take up under consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or debate? Yes, sir, over here.
Yeah, Peter McManus, Redacre Road. Back to you, one of your first slides. Can you explain a 7-plus percent increase in salary costs if there's no additional full-time equivalents?
Yeah, yeah. The 7% in salary costs are based on negotiated agreement. As you know, the salary line item is always the biggest in the school budget. It typically lives between the 65 and 68% of the budget level. And so that is the COLA increases, as well as the increases in longevity and expertise in the district.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a three-year contract? So is this the first year, so we have 7% for the next two? Is that correct?
No, that is not correct. The question was around it being a three-year contract. We negotiated a one-year contract last year. We are in contract negotiations with our associations now for a three-year contract. Our teacher associations are very good about postponing the three-year contract while we're reorganizing out of COVID, so that'll be coming soon.
Are there any other questions on line item 77? No, we have one more question.
David Alter, 21 Woodland Way. Could you, Mr. Moderator, could you comment on the relative cost of sending a student to Minuteman versus Neshoba Regional High School? The Minuteman assessment is roughly a ninth of our total budget for education. I believe we have about 65 students that are slated to go there from Stowe to Minuteman next year, which is less than a ninth of the total enrollment in our school district. So if you could comment on that. Thank you.
You can answer if you'd like, or we could defer to the Minuteman budget.
Yeah, I think it is probably more appropriate for Minuteman, but the cost of educating a student is calculated differently when you're talking about a public school that serves our town versus a technical school like Minuteman. So I think that's probably more appropriate for them.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think even in Neshoba, a high school student typically costs more than a K-8 student.
Yeah, that is true, that a high school student does cost more for a K-8 student. And I'll tell you, it's been quite a puzzle this year coming in to be Superintendent of a regional school system, because each of our towns unto their own are relatively small. So the cost to educate a child relative to a salary in three small towns can be vastly different, because if you have one town that has a pool of educators that are very experienced and are well down the salary schedule, that's going to be more expensive than a school where maybe the teaching force is much younger and is not farther down that schedule, yet they have relatively the same population of students. So as we look at that across the whole system, of course, that flattens out those costs, but it does cost more to educate a high school student than it does an elementary student.
Are there any other questions on the Neshoba Regional School budget? And seeing none, we can open voting. That'll take just a second. And voting is open on the Neshoba School Budget, Budget Line Item 77. And again, if your electric clicker is having a problem, it shouldn't take more than, if you're outside, it might take a few seconds to register. If it takes more than 10 or 15 seconds to register, I recommend talking to the checkers Switching it out, or just move closer to the doorway. And I'm going to give about 10 more seconds. And we can, I'm going to keep it open. A couple of people are having trouble. If you're standing right in the doorway and it takes more than two seconds to register, you probably want to switch out your electronic clicker. I think we can close the voting. At 162 yes and 10 no, line item 77 passes. Line item 78, I believe the Minuteman School District is going to give a short, Minuteman presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Good morning, citizens of Stowe. My name is Rich Eikinen. I am the Assistant Superintendent at Minuteman Tech. Next slide, please. Minuteman is an award-winning career in technical high school. Most recently, the United States Department of Education recognized Minuteman with the National Blue Ribbon Award. It was one of only three high schools in Massachusetts to receive this. Minuteman was cited for closing the performance gap, with 99% of students receiving a passing or advanced scores on the state MCAS exam. Also, the Massachusetts Reading Association presented Minuteman with the 2020 Exemplary Reading Award for Integrating Literacy Across Academic and Career Technical Education. As far as the academic achievement, 54% of our last year's graduates went on to two- and four-year schools. On the career and technical side, our students compete annually in the Skills USA Vocational Competition. This year, we are proud to say that we are sending seven students to nationals in Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia. Next slide, please. Here are several of our students performing in their academic, I mean vocational trades. Next slide. At Minuteman, we have two academies, Engineering, Construction and Trades, and Life Science and Services. Within these two academies are five pathways, which contain 19 career and technical education program majors. These programs are organized by pathways and academies to encourage the integration and learning among different programs. This represents our Engineering, Construction and Trades. Next slide. Here is our Life Science and Services. Next slide, please. At Minuteman, we also have something called the Minuteman Technical Institute. This is our adult division of learning, and these are the trades that are offered in the evening. Next slide, please. This year was a first, a year of many firsts at Minuteman. Since we have a new building and we're not, we haven't been fully engaged up until this year, we had the opportunity to perform in our theater for the first time last month. We also played our first home games in nearly five years on our new athletic fields. We also started a new program, animal science program. This was our first year. We just accepted 14 freshmen. We also had in our MTI program, the first all-women's carpentry class that was help-funded by Massachusetts, and we had a sign-in day, similar to what the NCAA athletics students who go on to athletics, where all the employers and the students sat in our student union and signed their contracts for employment. Next slide, please. The overall FY23 operating capital request is up 4.9%, however, you will notice that the member assessments are up 15%. Next slide, please. And here is some detail of what that, how that breaks out. Next slide, please. Here's a detail contributing to the Stowe's assessment. Minimum contributions have been increased, and like the Superintendent in Neshoba indicated, this is set down by the Massachusetts, specifically the Department of Education. Transportation is down last year. Operating debt and capital has increased, and debt services was excluded, but is included in the assessment. Next slide, please. Some of our district budget objectives: Continue to protect student and staff health, advance our capacity model, increase capacity to our building, start to utilize our facilities, which are now available to be rented, and we are in the final year of our building project. We hope to do MSB closeout by the end of this year, December of '22. Next slide, please. Some of our operating budget drivers: We are in the last year of a three-year contract, which was a 2% increase. We have obviously experienced some health insurance, transportation, utility costs increases, as seems to be the norm across the state. And like many others, we are experiencing supply chain issues, which also incurs increase in costs. We also are trying to procure two additional buses for our trades, and an increase to, and we're also going to increase our contribution to our capital stabilization on an annual basis. Next slide, please. On the career and technical ed side, our funding priorities are the new animal science program and the introduction of a logistics engineering program, which is the expansion or break-off from the robotics and engineering programs. Shop materials and equipment increase, which are directly contributed to the supply chain issues, which we are seeing across the country. The last, we are going, the district will be paying for costs of students to get industry credentials. At Minuteman, we do not have a, we have a no-fee, no-cut policy, and we'd like to bring that into the vocational trades. We don't see why students should be paying for the credentials that they are being trained for. Next slide, please. Staffing additions: While you may see four and a half, five and a half staff positions added, it's only a 1.5 FTE increase. Next slide, please. And this is due to these positions, these four positions not being filled, so again, it's only a 1.5 FTE increase. Next slide, please. The big story over the past couple of years is a significant enrollment change. In the past, in the past, a significant amount of enrollment came from students from outside the district, and now we are totally accepting students from our nine-member towns. Next slide, please. This has resulted in a reduction in the non-member tuition revenues, as well as a reduction in our district capital fee revenues paid by out-of-district students, or districts, which will result in increase in assessment to our town members, our member towns. Next slide, please. As you can see, we are predicting that our enrollment for next year will be 700 students. The green line on the bottom shows the steady decrease in our out-of-district enrollment. Next slide, please. While this slide has a lot of things going on, it tells the story quite well. If you'll notice, the blue line across the top in its downward trajectory, this depicts the millions of dollars that came from out-of-district tuition, which was used to offset member-town assessments. The orange line at the bottom, or the red line, shows the out-of-district capital fee revenue from non-member towns. We are seeing a fundamentally, fundamental shift in enrollment. There have been times over years where nearly 50% of enrollment came from out-of-district enrollment. So the changes in assessment are directly related to the changes in enrollment procedures. We use a four-year rolling average of the enrollment to calculate each town's assessment. This helps take the bite out of larger increases, such as Bolton, who had an increase of 60%, but only had a 35% increase in their assessment. Next slide, please. The application trend continues. You will note in the far-right column, the class of '26 had over 400 applications for 175 slots for next year. Over 300 of those applications came from member towns and approximately 100 out-of-district. The out-of-district can apply, but simply we do not have the room to accept any of them, and nor will we because of the agreement that we made with the new district agreement. Next slide, please. This slide shows member towns' applications as of April 20th, 2022. These numbers are always in state of flux, with students declining offers to come to Minuteman, and students are being offered acceptance off the waiting list. Stowe has 26 students applying, 20 have accepted, four have declined, and two still remain on the waitlist. Stowe will see a 32% increase from '22 to '23, with from 43 students in '22 to 57 in '23, but the four-year rolling enrollment average is 37.2 increase. Next slide, please. Here you can see Stowe's enrollment over the past six years. You can see it's steadily progressing. Next slide, please. The building was designed for 628 students. We exceeded that number on day one as the students walked through our doors in September of 2019. We projected we will hit the mark, 800 mark, in FY24. You may ask how Minuteman can do this without borrowing additional monies. We intend to use our capital stabilization account in order to fund some of these projects. This will also give the opportunity to students to work on expanding their own building, their own school. The second way is establishing partnerships. In 2018, special legislation was a pass. In twenty eighteen, special legislation was passed for Minuteman, allowing districts to enter into long-term land lease agreements, up to fifty years, with partners aligned with our mission and goals. We have identified a partner to, for our animal science veterinary, veterinarian health clinic, which we hope to open in the fall of twenty-three. The two strategies that I speak of will help us meet that eight-hundred student mark. Next slide, please. Just an update on the new building. As I said, we opened up in September of nineteen. The athletic fields continue to be worked on. They'll be finishing up in the next three weeks, maybe sooner. These new fields have allowed our students to play home games for the first time in five years. The new facility, both inside and out, provides us with the opportunity to rent our prop, parts of our facilities out, as well as our athletic fields. Next slide, please. Here is historical data on Stowe's assessment and per pupil assessment. The per pupil, the per pupil assessment, I'd like to point out, maybe I can stay ahead of that gentleman's question I heard, is the operating assessment divided by the number of students, which in this case is one point six million, divided by the fifty-seven to give you the twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars per student. Next slide, please. We have worked this year to address our OPEB liability. As you can see, our OPEB liability is twenty-six million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. Next slide, please. We will be increasing our contribution over the next six years as our debt, as debt comes off our balance sheet. We are also contributing an additional ten thousand dollars for new positions, each new position going forth, to our OPEB trust fund in order to combat the liability. Next slide, please. Again, Stowe's assessment for twenty-three, two million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and three dollars. Next slide, please. I'd also like to take this opportunity. Dr. Boquillen could not make it today, but I want to announce his retirement. He is leaving at the end of June after fifteen years. The man has done incredible things at Minuteman over those fifteen years, including getting the new building built. We are also proud to announce that we are having a new superintendent come in July one, Dr. Kathleen Swanson, which we're very excited about. Mr. Moderator, that's the end of our presentation.
Thank you. Is there any questions on the Minuteman budget? Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hi, Leah Viverito, Kirkland Drive. I wonder if you could explain to us, I think you said that Stowe has sixteen spots annually at Minuteman. Is that right?
Twenty-six spots.
Twenty-six spots.
Twenty-six spots for this, for this fall.
And did you say that we are, that there are two children who hit a waitlist?
Correct.
So I just wonder how Minuteman considers admission and how a public school manages waitlists and such. Who gets onto the waitlist, and how do you admit students to keep it equitable?
I'll try my best to answer that question for you. The admissions policy at any of the vocational schools is a five-stage process where you have, you have recommendations based, there's also attendance, discipline, grades, and a interview. Every student gets a raw score and then they're awarded enrollment at Minuteman Tech. You only have so many slots per the district agreement. This year it's twenty. So the first twenty with the highest scores are awarded those spots. After that, if one of those students declines acceptance to Minuteman, the next person in line will get that slot, and so on and so forth, until there is either no one waiting, and then it might be opened up across the nine-member towns, or until they're, you know, until they can get them all in.
So I guess my follow-up question is, wouldn't it be more equitable to use a lottery like other vocational schools have turned to in the last year? For a public school, I mean.
For a public school?
Well, Minuteman is a public school.
They are. I mean, it's very different in Neshova Regional because you, the sending communities don't accept, they automatically get to Neshova. The lottery debate is, is still on, in, up for discussion at Beacon Hill, so I really not like to get into my personal opinion on that, so, but I can, I think Alice wants to ask some, and.
On the first, on that slide, there was a slot?
I can't hear you there.
Sorry. On, on the slide, on, on the, that you're referring to, there was a list that said slot, and there was sixteen for Stowe. That is the minimum number. That is like guaranteed, Minuteman will give sixteen slots to Stowe. So we actually accepted twenty-four, which is way more than Stowe was necessarily sort of entitled to, based on the rolling average of the number of kids who've come to Minuteman in the past four years. So we, we can't take every kid that, that wants to come to Minuteman. Because we didn't get a big enough school, we tried really, really hard to get a bigger school. You may recall, we spent years trying to get a bigger school, and we're trying to grow it now so we can get more kids in, but that's.
A little louder.
That's basically what we can tell you about that now. We modified our admissions policy this year, and there isn't anything punitive in our admissions policy, and, and as I said, Minuteman took more Stowe kids than it necessarily had to take.
I would just say that as a taxpayer, I hope moving forward that Minuteman can move to a lottery to continue being equitable in their admission process, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the Minuteman budget? Seeing none, I think we can open the, open voting. I'm going to hold voting open for thirty seconds. On line item seventy-eight, the Minuteman budget, we are open for voting. No? transportation, which is something that was not funded, as state law said, it should be funded for quite a few years. I think we're about, we're good for the vote. I think we can close voting. We have a hundred and eighty-two votes, a hundred and sixty-eight yes and fourteen no. So the line item seventy-eight passes, and I believe that completes Article, Article Four of the general budget. The next thing that we're going to do is something called the consent calendar. We're going to do the opposite of what we did with the budget. We're going to try to group a whole bunch of articles together in a single vote. We'll take, we'll take a motion, and then I'll describe it a little bit.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the annual town meeting take action on Articles five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine as printed in the warrant, without debate on any such articles, and provided that upon the request of any voter at this meeting made before the vote is taken on this motion, an article shall be dropped from the consent calendar and shall be acted upon in the ordinary course and order of business at this town meeting.
We have a motion in a second. So what I'm going to do here is go through the consent calendar and ask, much like we did in the budget, on Articles five through thirty-nine, and if anyone wants to hold that for an individual motion and debate, you can do that. So again, much like the budget, and I'll go through the, the articles. Article five, revolving fund for inspection. Article six, revolving fund for advanced life support. Article seven, Stowe Cultural Council. Article eight, the Smart nine-one-one notification system, that's the reverse nine-one-one. Article nine, weights and measures. Article ten, transfer to conservation fund. Article eleven, transfer from wetland protection fund. Article twelve, addition to the conservation fund. Article thirteen, Aspet River Water Chestnut Control. Article fourteen, update of property valuations. Article fifteen, town records, binding, and repair. Article sixteen, highway, road machinery, private ways, and municipal parking lots. Article seventeen, highway engineering fees. Article eighteen, household hazardous waste collection. Article nineteen, municipal solid waste storage. Article twenty, Stowe TV expenses. Article twenty-one, holiday decorations and lighting fund. Is that a hold? I think that's, did you have a quick question, or did you want to hold it for debate? I can't, can't hear, sorry.
Yeah, Susan Coles, Boxville Road. I'm just wondering why the town would be asked to pay for holiday lighting.
Maybe the town administrator could, could address that.
So we pay for the lighting in the tree in Lower Village, the lights on town building, the wreaths on town building. In addition to that, this fund is used for the new diversity, equity, inclusion fund that we have to provide. We had the breast cancer awareness lights outside of the town building and other initiatives that we're doing as far as lighting and decorations.
Okay. Article twenty-three, transfer to OPEB trust fund. Article twenty-four, transfer from Harvard Acre Wells loan receipts. Article twenty-five, water system expenses. That's a hold. So could we make a note on the next slide, slide, next slide? Twenty-six, the Select Board Small Purchase Fund. Article twenty-seven, construction and maintenance of water holes. Article twenty-eight, Lake Boone water quality. Article twenty-nine, planning board, engineering and consulting and master plan expenses. Article thirty, community preservation expenses. Article thirty-one, community preservation reserves. Article thirty-two, veterans benefits. Article thirty-three, tax title proceedings. Article thirty-four, online permit and license fees. Article thirty-five, online budgeting software. Article thirty-six, replacement of personal protective equipment for structural firefighting. Article thirty-seven, Department of Unemployment Assistance. Article thirty-eight, complete streets. And Article thirty-nine, Lake Boone Patrol. Article thirty-nine is being held. And just one sec. Linda, do you have a spare pen? I can't find my pen. Thank you. Sorry, I dropped my pen. So we are holding Articles twenty-five and thirty-nine. Can you back up one slide and cross out twenty-five? Or you can delete them, either way, and thirty-nine. So this is the motion now. It is Articles five through thirty-nine, except, well, five through thirty-eight, accept Article twenty-five. So twenty-five and thirty-nine are held. Were there any holds that I missed? And hearing none, we can open the voting. It'll take just a sec. Open, open, please. So voting is open for the consent calendar, and we'll keep it open for thirty seconds. Just a quick reminder, there is, I know people are having to come up to the door to vote. Just a reminder, you can only vote your clicker. Again, this is one of those, we, we try not to be too formal, but this is a legislative meeting of the town, and if, if there was a problem, we wouldn't want any legal issues with people not voting their own clicker. And I'm going to give about another five seconds. We're up over a hundred and eighty votes.
We need more out here.
Okay, we'll give another ten seconds. We're up over a hundred and ninety. I, we have someone trying to vote. All right. I think we are, we have someone trying to vote, so I'm going to hold. I'm going to close voting. We have a hundred and ninety-five votes. It's a hundred and eighty-nine to six, so the consent calendar passes. We'll go to Article twenty-five. I believe that can be moved as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Lent, One Five Four Taylor Road, and Member of Sustainable Stowe.
Just a second, we don't have a motion on the floor. I need to get the selectmen to do something.
We don't have it written. I'm just double-checking. As, as written in the warrant, that's, okay. Mr. Moderator, I, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be added to any balance remaining from previous appropriations to be expended by the facility manager for the purpose of paying expenses related to the operation of the town's public water, water supply systems.
And we have a motion in a second. Now we can.
Okay, so question, we're in support of what's written in the, in the warrant, but have a question about why there's no mention anywhere in here of town's efforts to address PFAS while we're still delivering bottled water to those properties connected to the town well? And we don't, you don't hear anything about PFAS, permanent PFAS mitigation.
I'll ask the town administrator to.
So the reason we are not appropriating funds at this town meeting for PFAS is because the Select Board authorized use of the American Recovery Fund Plan Act. So we have appropriated funding just through a different mechanism, so we did not need town meeting approval. The project is still ongoing. We are still actively working with our LSPs and our engineers to remediate it permanently. It is a lengthy process with DEP, but it is still ongoing. We still have funding for it. We still have funding for it, and the board appropriated an additional five hundred thousand this year towards that remediation.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Okay, Susan Coles again. I'm just wondering why it would cost fifty grand a year to test two water supplies on a monthly basis? I have my water tested, cost about two fifty, three hundred, and I was thinking, why would it need to be tested on a monthly basis, and why so high a cost compared to what I was able... Have you done any, like, checking around? Because Safewell did it for a reasonable price, and I tested everything.
Go ahead.
So yes, the water systems in the town hall and the Pom Pom City Community Center are public water supplies. They fall into DEP regulations. We are required to test at their regulations and their requirements, which is monthly. We are providing, performing the tests that they require us to do, which are very costly, unfortunately.
I think it's amazing that you guys are stuck with that. Is there a way to argue the case with them? It seems like you have over a barrel where you're charged an extremely high amount and doing it so often. What are they doing with that data, is what I wonder?
Well, unfortunately, because PFAS is in Stowe, they actually increased our testing for next fiscal year. So we had just, we, we are over a barrel, and we have to comply with the DEP regulations.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, over here.
Martin Meyer of Twenty-Five Brook Mill Road. I have another question related to PFAS. I recall, I think it was last year, we had allocated some money to upgrade the town building's filtration system that was serving one of the public water supplies, and part of it had been to remediate the, I think it was suspected at the time, PFAS problem around the town building site. I was wondering if that work had been completed, if we had retested for PFAS after that work had been completed, and I think, I believe that supply is also supplying the schools, and I was wondering if it had offset the need for bottled water distribution at the schools.
So, we have not completed the filtration system in the town building, because again, it is an ongoing process. We are evaluating the entire water supply that comes out of the town building, which does not provide water or PFAS through the school. That was the former fire station contamination. So whatever happens at the town building would not change what is taking place at the school currently. But we are in the process. We do hope over the next few months that the filtration system will be ready to be installed. Unfortunately, due to the rise in costs and costs escalating, we are trying to, again, find lower costing options that still comply with DEP so that we can equitably and economically feasible put in a new system. But the costs are just through the roof right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions on Article, on the motion under Article twenty-five? And seeing none, we can open voting. I'm going to hold voting open for a minute because we're having some slow voting outside. But voting is now open on Article twenty-five, on the motion under Article twenty-five. I say it that funny way. We don't actually vote on, on anything in the warrant. The warrant is really an agenda, even though it looks very specific. What we vote on is the motion that's read. Sometimes the, the article is specific enough that the selectman can, the selectman can read as written in the motion, or as written in the, in the warrant. But again, it's always the motion that we're voting on, not the agenda item. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to make a, a moderator official comment here. People holding two clickers are going to be removed from the meeting. I'm sorry to have to say that. That's not legal. We will have to remove you if we see you holding two clickers. A question, we have a question. Voting is still...
I just, while, while people are voting, I just want to do a shout-out. In terms of transparency, if you notice in the consent articles, almost every one of them shows the balance coming forward on these funds that we're transferring further months, further funds into. That's never happened before, so I want to publicly thank the town administrator for including that information in the warrant.
Thank you. I think I'm going to close voting. And at one hundred and eighty-two, yes and eleven, no, the motion passes under Article twenty-five. Article thirty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to be added to any balance remaining and previously appropriated for the purpose of Lake Boone Patrol and call-outs from May through October.
We have a motion in a second on Lake Boone Patrol. What was the comment or question?
Dave Arson, Altough, Hastings Street. Okay, as...
A little closer to the mic, please.
I was just wondering, you, as a select person, Sturgis said, there is a balance there of five thousand four hundred dollars. Throughout the years, it's been a much lower amount. Are we expecting some more naughty people out there on Lake Boone, or is this for boat maintenance and other stuff that's not within the operating budget?
Yes.
So we're not expecting more naughty people out there. Last year, we actually, July first or June thirtieth of the prior year, our dedicated Lake Boone Patrol officer retired. We actually went the entire fiscal year without anyone dedicated to patrol the lake. We have since hired a new officer who will be spending time much more dedicated only to the lake to patrol this year than in the past. So, well, we don't expect to use ten thousand dollars. We're not sure what this first year will be like with the increased patrol.
Is, is he on a fixed salary?
He is not. He's, he's an hourly salary.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, this is Article thirty-nine, correct. We are open for voting on Article thirty-nine. Lake Boone Patrol. So again, folks outside, if you're standing by the door and it's taking more than a couple of seconds for your vote to register, you probably need to go back to the checkers in the cafeteria and, and switch out your clicker. It should be, if you're standing in the doorway, it should be almost instantaneous. Even if you're out twenty, thirty feet away from the door, it shouldn't take more than three or four seconds to register a vote. And about ten more seconds. And I think we can close voting on Article thirty-nine. And that passes with one hundred and seventy-eight, yes, and eight, no. So now we're ready to go on to Article forty.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town discuss the items...
I'm sorry, before we take a motion, I think we have an overview presentation from
Testing, testing. Hi, folks. Steve Jollnick, Chair of Capital Planning. I'm here to present a short overview of the process that we go through leading up to town meeting. You'll see that there are six items in the warrant this year for, with respect to capital, and you'll be hearing from members of our committee about specific recommendations about each article. But first, I'd like to acknowledge the work of the members of the committee, most of whom are sitting over here, and thank them for their efforts. We've been working remotely, which is something we've been doing for the last couple of years, doesn't make it any easier. And like, like I'm sure all of you are, we're anxious to return to a more normal way of doing things. Next slide, please. Regular attendees of cap, of town meeting will, of course, heard me say that capital planning is charged with considering and making recommendations to the town about capital projects. Specifically, we're charged with presenting with you, presenting to you an annual and five-year capital outlay program for the town so that you can make informed choices about what you spend your money on over the next few years. And every year, we're faced with two competing things, the capital needs and desires of the various departments, and the reality that they must be paid for. We view our mission as helping the town make wise capital choices. So every year, we, oh, and the definition of what constitutes a capital item is shown on this slide. We start in December or January with the various departments' budget requests. We meet with each department. We ask them a bunch of, they would say, critical questions. We work to understand why they're making these requests, what's the basis of their, the amount they're asking for, what their priorities are. We go over their five-year plan. We look at special purchase articles as well. And finally, in conjunction with the town administrator and the finance committee, we look at the town's overall financial picture and make recommendations about what each capital expenditure ought to look like. Next slide, please. This is a summary of the, of the requests that are for fiscal year twenty-three that are in your warrant. That's the first column on the left, and it compares them to two other sets of figures. One is what each department had in their five-year plan at this time last year, and the second is what today's requests look like compared to what was given to us back in December. And you'll, of course, notice that there are some pretty big differences in these columns. That's okay. I mean, you know, we, we know that departments' plans change from year to year, but this year, it's, it's quite dramatic. Last year, I think I told you that our capital plan for this year was going to look something like three point five million dollars, and now it's eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. That's two point seven million dollars less than what we had in our plan for last year. And the other thing that's different is what we saw in January and December compared to what we have now is quite a big difference, about six point four million dollars different, which is a very big number. I'll have more to say about why there's that differences. And also on this slide, you'll see our recommendations. We're going to have something specific to say about each, each capital item as it's moved. Next slide, please. So this, this, this slide shows you what became of those initial requests that came to us this year. Remember I said that figure was initially over seven million dollars? Most of those requests, about six million of which, have been deferred for further study. The biggest ticket on this is, of course, the Lake Boone Dam. We'll have more to say about that in a bit. But basically, funding for the dam reconstruction is going to come, you know, at another point in time. There's some engineering funding this year, but we're looking to see whether we'll be able to get some state funding for, for covering the, some of the construction funds of the dam. We just talked about the water system serving the town building. There's further study about that that was originally going to come forward this year. But as Denise mentioned, we have an ongoing study to look at options for, for, you know, dealing with the water that, the well that serves the town building and, and various parts of the town center. Over five hundred thousand dollars of this original seven million dollars request has been paid for by, essentially by the federal government with the Funding for the American Rescue Plan Act. And that's the stuff on the left-hand side of this slide. All of those things have been paid for by the feds. So again, thank you very much to the federal government for that. And that leaves eight hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred in requests that are going to be on this year's warrant, which is what you're going to be voting on in a couple of minutes. Next slide. This is the, our projection of the town's five-year capital outlay program. The column on the, on the left-hand side for FY twenty-three includes not only what's in the warrant, but also the ARPA-funded items, and the rest of the five-year plans that the various departments have given us for the next four years. As I said, some of this is going to change. What I will say, however, is that the, the funding that we're, the funding requests that we're looking for over the next four years are considerably higher than what we've seen historically. I'll have more to say about that in a couple of minutes. We've got a few big-ticket items, and I'll show you what some of those are. People are, people are asking me questions about why things cost so much money, why are we looking at such, you know, larger amounts going forward? I'll say there's three things here. One is things just cost more, right? You know, anybody that's bought a new car recently knows that vehicles cost more than they ever have. You know, there are these big-ticket items that we've got coming ahead, which we'll hear more about. And then there's a third reason, which we see, there's new leadership in the highway, the highway department, the building department, the fire and rescue department, all have new leaders over the last, you know, the last few years. I don't know. We, this, this may be a cultural shift in the way these departments handle their capital items, and we'll see from the next slide that each of these departments has some substantial capital requests they're going to be making over the next couple of years. So next slide, please. So this is, this is what, this is what we're looking at in the next few years in terms of some significant capital. There's the repair of Lake Boone Dam. That has to happen. Sudbury Road Bridge is also on the highway department's list of things to be, to be looked at. The, the planning board has been meaning to do a traffic study for the center of town for a number of years. The fire and rescue department has had on their plan for a number of years to replace Engine Fifteen. There's a couple of culverts that the highway department thinks need to be replaced. There's some projects at the Hail School, and the highway department is also looking at replacing the Highway Barn. So these are all things that are going to be talked about, you know, in the future at other town meetings. I mean, supposedly the Chinese curse is, "May you live in interesting times," so it seems like things are going to be interesting for capital planning in the town for the next few years. Last slide, please. This is my personal favorite slide. I do it every year. It's the ten-year snapshot of what, what capital requests have looked like. The red bar in the middle is where we are this year. Again, it's what's in the warrant plus the ARPA-funded items. The blue bars are what we spent money on over the last five years. We thought that that amount that we spent in FY twenty, the, the four million dollars, it mostly went to repair the Route One Seventeen in Lower Village. We thought that was a one-time thing, but when you look at the green bars, which is the future, maybe not. As I said, we've, we've seen, there's some significant stuff that's coming down the road. I mean, even, even if you take Lake Boone Dam out of the picture, you're still looking at something like two point eight million dollars of capital requests over the next, you know, four years on an average. So that's about twice what we spent over the last five. And with that, I'll take any questions, Mr. Moderator.
This is questions on the overview. Each capital item is going to get its own motion and its own discussion. Yes?
Can, you're not, as part of this overview, looking at, say, the future high school projects?
No.
Okay. Or the library project, for that matter?
All right, I think I'll take that motion again from the selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town discuss items of this article individually and vote upon each item separately as to the amount to be appropriated for each item as set forth in separate motions proposed.
We have a second. Did I, did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. This is just to split up the Article forty so that we will vote on each line item separately. Is there any, any debate on that? And seeing none, we can open voting. Voting is now open on that motion. We'll hold it open for about another ten seconds, although there's a couple people that it's not registering. Again, if it takes more than two or three seconds to register, you probably need to swap out the, the clicker up with the, the checkers in the cafeteria. It shouldn't, especially if you're standing in the auditorium or near the doors. It's, shouldn't, shouldn't take more than one or two seconds to register. And I'm going to close voting. At one fifty-three to twenty, the motion passes. So forty dash one, do we have a motion? So 40-1, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $48,750 for Article 40-1, replacement of a police cruiser with a hybrid model.
Second? We have a motion in a second for a hybrid police cruiser. Capital planning.
Capital planning approved this purchase. There was some debate on what type of vehicle to get. And, Mr. Moderator, if Chief Solis is available for explaining why he got a hybrid versus an electric one, which is what some people want to do, I appreciate that.
I'm going to ask, because I haven't -- I don't have one in my printed thing. Is there a recommendation from the finance committee?
It's on the top of the page. It's on the top.
Oh, it does recommend in writing. Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Alan Fierce, 284 Red Acre Road. So I have had some concerns about...
A little closer to the microphone, please.
Okay. Can you hear now?
Yes.
So I've had some concerns about Article 40-1 to authorize the police to replace a cruiser with a hybrid rather than electric vehicle. And I had originally thought I would be standing here with an amendment in hand to change the article so that it would require the purchase of an electric vehicle. But rather than blindside Chief Solis with that, I've communicated with him and heard his arguments, and I would like to give him an opportunity after I speak to respond to my concerns. But I wanted to use this as an opportunity because I think it's the only chance we're going to have at today's town meeting to talk about the climate emergency that we are in. As some of you know, Sustainable Stowe had a warrant article that they had hoped to have at this town meeting, but the selectmen did not allow it. So this is the only opportunity we have to talk about that. And we have a climate emergency. I've been talking about this climate situation for many years. Those of you who are long-timers know that about 10 years ago, I was here recommending that the police department replace their cruisers with hybrids. And I'm actually quite pleased that finally, 10 years later, they are now moving in that direction. But we are seeing the situation differently now. We are seeing cities all over the country that are purchasing electric police cruisers. New York City, in particular, has purchased over 1,000 of them this year. The town of Topsfield in Massachusetts has purchased one. Now, ironically, the town wants a hybrid. I wish they had done that 10 years ago, but here we are. The climate emergency has changed since then. We really are in it now. All over the world, the situation has become drastic. We are seeing heat waves, even in the United States, Portland and Seattle last summer, droughts, devastating droughts in our own country and elsewhere. Storms, devastating storms, impacts on our food supply, inflation due to climate change. And all over the world, people are reacting. At the international level, we know about the UN, the IPCC, the world's...
I'm sorry. You hit your time, and we're getting way off subject.
Well, this is the subject. I'm sorry. I'll try to wrap it up shortly.
You have a couple of seconds to wrap it up.
Well, we need to move more quickly. And the way to do that is to replace, here in Stowe, every time we have a vehicle or an appliance that is running across the field, we need to replace it with an electric-powered one. We have very cheap electricity, and we have very clean electricity, thanks to Hudson Light We're not going to force anybody to buy them, but when you need to replace an item, buy electric, whether it's a vehicle, a heat pump, an induction stove, buy electric.
Thank you. I think you've made your comment. We're going to take a comment from this gentleman over here.
I hope you give Chief Solis an opportunity to respond.
Yes, sir. Is the mic on?
Test? Better now. Martin Meyer of 25 Brook Mill Road. I have similar concerns about questioning why it was that we opted for a hybrid rather than an electric. I was hoping that the police chief could comment on that, but also, I was hoping for some context of how large, overall, our car fleet is for the police station, how often we replace vehicles, that sort of thing, so we can get a sense of whether, if we're not getting an electric vehicle this time, how long it might be until our next vehicle might be considered, so that we can kind of estimate whether electric vehicles for police purposes might be in a better place at that point, that we could opt to recommend that.
Thank you. Conveniently, Chief Solis is sitting right behind you, and I will ask him to address Well, we had a question here. So, two questions. One was, why hybrid, not electric? And how big is our fleet?
Thank you, everybody. So I'll answer the first question, how big is our fleet? Last year, we had seven vehicles. We turned in three of those vehicles, and those were internal combustion engine vehicles, and we went to two hybrids. So we decreased our fleet by one. So we now have six patrol -- six vehicles in our fleet. I'm going to continue on with the why we're not going to do electric at this time. So I know that some residents are looking for me to change the fleet over to all electric vehicles. I'm not opposed to this at all. However, right now, the mission-critical purpose of our police cruisers, the requirements that are out there for us and for what the electric vehicle can provide are not compatible just yet. So over the past 10 years, I can tell you the Stowe Police has removed all eight-cylinder vehicles. We got rid of the Crown Vix, and we went to six-cylinder Explorers. And now, we've moved from the six-cylinder Explorers to the hybrid. Since January, introducing those two hybrids, our consumption over our internal combustion engines is about 40 to 50 percent less on gasoline. So our hybrids are getting, for the same mileage, are getting double the amount of mileage, and we're using half as much gasoline. So currently, though, the infrastructure for Stowe or the Stowe Police Department to have an electric vehicle is not there. I've been working with the Stowe Official Green Committee to try to get us to have a charging station. We don't have any charging stations. So for us to get a electric vehicle, we wouldn't have the ability to charge it at this time. Those are very costly. It's around, I was told, between $10,000 and $20,000 for a Stage Two. And so what we need to do is work with the Green Committee. They have a whole presentation. I don't want to take their thunder, but they're trying to put some works in place to get us, as a town, to get to those resources. Also, I haven't budgeted yet for the increase in electricity. So I haven't been able to really look at how much electricity is going to be used and how much I have to increase for that budget out of my -- to make sure I pay for the electricity. So the other part, too, of these electric vehicles, there are two main ones that are being used out there. I've seen the Tesla, and I've also seen the Mach-E. So right now, I've seen other local police departments use those. We don't have officers that are just committed to doing administrative functions. Like, some of these towns are using them for just going to court. Our court officer is still handling calls. They are still going to emergency calls, and they still need to be able to carry all the equipment that's required, because we work closely with all our other partners, public safety partners in Stowe. Another part is that the Mach-E and the Tesla don't have prisoner cages available yet. So all the officers that are working have to have the prisoner cages available in case that we do make an arrest. So that's not in those cars yet. I've seen New York City, Boston, other big police departments going to it. They have transport vans, so they don't need to transport those prisoners around. I also saw that the Michigan State Police did a case study with the Mach-E, and they found the average was 180 miles of range. But that was best-case scenario, no radios, no lights, no load on the car. So I'm waiting for the LA Sheriff's Department, who run their test through the worst-case scenario. Fully loaded, fully lights. We want to be able to make sure that the officers are at a accident scene in the middle of winter for eight hours, or standoff, or wherever they need to be for an extended period of time, and not have to worry about watching how much miles they have left. And so I understand that we want to switch. Right now, for this year, I don't think we're there yet. I think we're going in that direction, and I would be eager to see what we could do in the next few years. Once we get the infrastructure in place, then let's have the conversation. Let's have, you know, I encourage people to come down, see what our cars do, see what they're supposed to do, see what they're supposed to carry, and take a look at it. And then, let's look at what available things are out there. The other part, too, is that the Mach-E and the Tesla are not on state bid yet. So for a police car, we have to pay full retail price for them. We can't just put them -- they're just not at a discounted state bid price. So I don't feel recommending the Mach-E or the Tesla at $55,000 before any equipment's added, before I have a charging station. I think that, I think, once we work as a community together to get all those things in place, then that's the time that we can really look at it. I'll be happy to ask any -- answer any questions.
Thank you. That was a much more detailed answer than I was expecting. Is there any other debate or questions? Yes, ma'am, over here.
Andaludi, 24 Arboglen Drive. I was one of the number-two Prius owners in the state of Massachusetts, so my green bona fides are there. I have just stopped -- started looking for an SUV. I would love to go with an electric car, but it won't get me to Poughkeepsie, which where my sister lives. I've seen police cars on duty eight hours, and electric cars not going to do that. As much as I would love to be able to buy an electric, they're just not there yet. I mean, not, I don't know about the financial things, but a regular hybrid SUV is $48,000. So, because I was going to buy one, but I'm not now. Anyway, I just wanted to back up with the chief said with a civilian point of view.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the motion under Article 40-1? And seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. We will open 40-1. This is going to take a second. We didn't have it set up right. Just put in 40-1. And voting is open for the police car. And we'll keep voting open for about a minute. So, under Article 40, there are six. All right, about 10 more seconds. Still have people. If it's taking more than three or four seconds to register, again, you need to switch out your clicker. If it says "okay," it means that it's registered to vote. I think we can close voting. No? All right, we're going to close voting. 198 to 12, the motion passes. 40-2, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for Article 40-2 feasibility for the Highway Barn.
We have a motion and a second. Capital planning.
Yes, Head DeLuca, 26 Crescent Street. Capital planning voted 3 to 1 in favor of this motion. The intent here is to start a design study for the development of a high -- the building of a new or replacement of the Highway Barn. You may have noted in Steve's presentation that they're carrying a cost of estimated cost of $1.2 million for that. And this is the study to actually understand the scope of that project and what the trades are related to that effort.
Are there any questions or comments on the motion under Article 40-2? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mark Fowkes, 39 Adams Drive, Stowe. I'm not in favor of this.
A little closer, if you can.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Yep, okay. Mark Fowkes, 39 Adams Drive. I'm not in favor of this $100,000. The town seems to be spending a lot of money on feasibility studies. We, the capital planning board has already basically said we need this building. The highway department's requesting it, says we need this building. Seems like an awful lot of money to spend on $100,000 on something that we already know we need, and with the feasibility of it is. They're going to talk about design plans and stuff like this, but $100,000 is a lot of money. The Board of Selectmen recently did a -- approved $100,000 to a water supply for the center of Lower Village. Looks like we're looking for $450,000 for the planning board in a couple of years for another feasibility study that was just on the board here. I just think these feasibility studies are a waste of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you want to address that?
I suppose I could try. I think that feasibility studies actually save you money. It allow you, it allows you to understand the aspects of the problem. The Highway Barn is situated down on South Acton Road. It's in, adjacent to a lot of wetlands. There are new regulations relating to how to contain water flow from that property. This is a complicated issue. And jumping in and saying, you know, if somebody came to the town meeting and said, "We need $2.5 million," you might legitimately ask, "Tell me what the project is." And one might legitimately say, "I can't because I haven't done the study." So doing the study is, I think, the appropriate thing to do. And the estimate of the cost was not made up. It was not a plug number. It was actually the result of a request for a proposal.
Are there any other questions or comments? And seeing none, we will open the voting now. So voting is open for the motion under 40-2, feasibility study for the Highway Barn. So I'm going to give it about another 10 seconds. Okay. All right, I'm closing voting. It's 162 to 47, the motion passes. And we have a motion for 40-3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $55,000 for Article 40-3, resurfacing and curbing of Farm Road.
And we have a motion and a second. Capital Planning.
Mr. Moderator, seven years ago, the Highway Department initiated an annual program to attend to the deteriorating condition of the town's secondary roads. These projects were typically funded as capital expenditures, because the state Chapter 90 funding we received is nearly always used for projects on the town's higher-volume roads. The resurfacing of Farm Road is the next one of these projects on the department's priority list. Due to the current condition of this road and the large increase in asphalt prices that are expected to occur over next year as a result of the current high cost of petroleum products, Capital Planning was convinced that it would not be prudent to delay undertaking this project. Therefore, we voted unanimously to recommend that the town support its expenditure in the upcoming fiscal year.
Are there any questions or comments on the motion under 40-3? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Trish Crawford, 34 Harvard Road. I don't disagree with this, and I know that asphalt costs are high. I have a question really on recycled asphalt, only because I was traveling while there was some work being done last summer, and I stopped to ask the crew questions. And my understanding from that is that there's a larger percentage of recycled asphalt, which requires, or, and that's a trend, and that it requires, actually, it decreases, dramatically decreases, the life of the pavement. And I wonder if anyone could address that? Because 10%, I was told, decreases it by like 50% of the life. And I'm wondering financially what that does.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, that is accurate. And I would actually encourage you at some point to watch our last select board meeting, where the Highway Superintendent did a whole presentation on roadway management and the types of pavement and asphalt to be used. Unfortunately, we can only purchase the materials that are being produced right now, and what is being produced is a recycled mixture. And yes, it does decrease the lifespan of the roadway. The Highway Superintendent has methods to try and extend the life by doing repairs as we go through the years, so crack sealing and hot hole repairs and things like that. But unfortunately, there's no material that we can buy any longer that would give us sort of the 20-year lifespan of a road.
Great, thank you. Can you tell me, is that because of government restrictions on where, or is it just everyone producing it, is doing recycled?
It's everyone producing recycled, trying to make the most of recycled materials. So that's just the way the asphalt plants are being, are using material now to make it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you take the votes inside the cafeteria?
Sure. Is there a mic in there? Paul, is there? Or do you want me to just come in?
Yeah, just take the vote, and I'll ask what it is. Is there any other questions or comments on 40-3?
I don't think you're on, David.
Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll proceed to a vote.
So somebody absorbed a person voting, pointing the clicker towards the door, and then handing it to someone else, and they voted. But we might want to remember, they can only vote once, and it will be the last button.
About 10 more seconds for voting. And I think we can close voting.
Another second, I hope.
We still have a bunch of them.
Okay.
This is actually, was not available then, but this is one of the, one of the home styles that's going to be in the, in the, this proposed for the Stow Acres property that was also very, that seemed to be very popular, and it was, is in the same kind of, in the same kind of vein. But the idea is that the New England style is, and, and for the detached housing. Next slide, please. So the project cost is the original cost, the Housing Trust spent this, these funds, $225,000 plus $50,000 for demolition. In 2020, the cost, the average cost across the Commonwealth to, to build an affordable unit is $330,000. The estimate for this year is about a 25% increase, about $400,000, times six, is the total construction cost of about $2.4 million. So the total cost for this is just under $2.7 million. Next slide. So for the land, the funding is, this is to define what the subsidy is needed. These are subsidized, we always talk about the SHI, or the subsidized housing index. And this is the subsidy that's, there are no state or federal funds available now for subsidizing affordable homes. So it's really only the, the local community that has the, the wherewithal to do this. And luckily, we have an active CPC, and we've been planning for this for a while, so these funds are available to do this, if, should it be else today. So the land and pre-development costs, SMT has already put in almost $300,000 in, into this. In 2021, the sale prices were, have been about, and right now, they're about $250,000 on average. That's what the affordable price is set from is a combination of what the area median income for Boston is, and also a component for the current interest rates. We believe the current interest rates are, the interest rates are going to go up over the next year or two. So we believe that that means that the cost of what the affordable unit will be, be less. So we've just, like, it's not going to go down by a lot, because the, the income's going to go up, so just having a, kind of an estimate of what that's going to be. So that's about what we think, 1.44 million is what we think we're going to have in terms of revenue after selling, after building and selling those homes. The CPC has put in $25,000 already for, for pre-development drawings and other work that's required for us to be able to go get the, to put into the RFP. There may be other grants and other things available, but for instance, we're very interested in having this be, well, energy efficient at least, but actually, if it can actually be, you know, you know, actually, so that we could put in active photovoltaics, for instance, or something like that, we would love for that to be happening. But we're going to need other funding besides what we can, what we can provide for that. So we're going to be investigating that, and we ask, you know, the Sustainable Stow and the rest, in the, in the Green Advisory Committee, we've asked them for help to be, to be involved here and help us both to write the RFP to include those things, but also to help us investigate other funding mechanisms. So the total, so the total funding is about 1.88 million, the total cost is 2.75. That leaves a gap around $900,000. We've been advised that a good, usually contingencies 10%. We've raised that a little bit, just in terms of some of the, like, the unpredictable construction costs that have been, as we, and fuel costs, et cetera. So we've raised that to 12%. So our total CPC request was 1.1 million. Next slide, please. So a couple of questions have come up during the public meetings and stuff, and we thought we'd just address it now, so people know. Why, why is, why is this funding necessary now? First of all, there are a number of larger developments that might potentially put us over our 10%, but they may not proceed as currently planned. They're still in, in the drawing stage, and we need to be prepared so that we can constantly be building units, because, as I'll explain later, so some of these affordable units may be spread over four or five years. So if you look, it's, now it's 2022, if it's five years, it's 2007, when those are completely built, that will only get us three years of safe harbor until the number goes up again that we, our target number in 2030. So it's important to keep, when we have funds, to continue to build. We've been advised that, also in this construction kind of environment, that people develop, we're more likely to get respondents to an RFP to develop this property if, if funding is already secured, so that it's not, it's their, we're not asking people to go in and start working on a project without there being funding sources in place. And so we'd like, that's why we'd like to do this now. Also, we have some, we have about seven or eight units that are on the subsidized housing inventory right now, that are not in perpetuity deed restrictions, and will be coming off in the next five to seven years. Okay. And, and we restricted, and also, the funds that are in the CPC, in the reserve funding, Reserve for Housing, need to be spent only on this. Next slide. Summary, project's been in consideration for three years. It's consistent with our housing production plan. The concept, this concept has been approved at past town meetings. The subsidy per unit is less than past requests. That's due to the low cost of the parcel acquisition, but, and the use of trust funds to purchase the parcel, number one, number two, and that there's the low interest rates and the increasing median income means we'll have more revenue from the eventual sale of products, of the units, pardon me. We've been, CPC and SMT have been, known this is coming, and we've been reserving funds, as I wrote, 800,000, but it's actually more than 900,000 now in reverse, in reserve funds for, that could be used just for affordable housing. And it's important for us, for the CPU, for us as a town, to use the CPC funds for affordable housing to build as many units as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, are there any questions or comments on the motion under Article 42? We have two people already waiting outside.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, the select, select board has a recommendation.
The select board unanimously supports this article. This has been a project in development for three years, working in conjunction with Conservation Commission and Stow Conservation Trust to maximize open space while providing six affordable owner-occupied homes funded with restricted CPA funds that can only be used for affordable housing. It's important for the town to show continuous progress and commitment to offering community housing, given that housing in general, and affordable housing in particular, is short supply throughout the Commonwealth.
And did Capital Planning have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, Peter McManus, Red Acre Road. Capital Planning did vote to recommend approval of this article. It's been said as part of the ongoing effort to increase the affordable housing stock in town. We use CPA funds that have already been set aside for this purpose, so taxes will not increase from this expenditure. We gained significant leverage towards our 10% goal in the housing stock. Well, that's coming from Stow Acres, but you can see, that's not sufficient on its own, so we do need to keep adding to the stock. So we recommend approval.
Thank you. I'm going to take the first question from outside. They've been patiently waiting.
Hi, Carolyn, 30 Orchard Road. Thanks. It's more of a comment. As a supporter of climate mitigation activities in Stow, I applaud the intention of the Stow Municipal Affordable Housing Trust to push for all-electric, energy-efficient homes in the Red Acre Road development. I also hope that they also push, I also hope that they also push for the.
I think they're having to turn the volume up, because you need to get really close to the microphone.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, hi. I also hope that they also push for the installation of EV charging capabilities, at a minimum, the appropriate wiring to install charging capabilities, to ensure an equitable opportunity for people in affordable housing to place, had to have a place to charge EV cars, so they are not locked out of the option to own an EV car. And this has been a big issue, I don't know if in Stow, but I know in other towns where they have affordable housing communities, where the people living there cannot afford to run the wiring, so they cannot own an electric vehicle. And if we want to have this be an equitable community, especially with the oncoming of climate getting worse, we need to provide the capability for everyone to be able to own an electric car. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take this, this lady here.
Yeah, Pam Weathers, 89 West Acton Road. Just a quick clarification, this is, this CPC money that you're requesting is not going to negatively impact the larger project at Stow Acres, right? Thank you.
The answer is that, to that is correct, it won't impact it. Yes, this young lady over.
Hi, Nancy Arsenal, Red Acre Road, and I'm also on the planning board. I just wanted to clarify something. It was great to see the slide of the types of people that might live there, was Stow residents, seniors, first-time homebuyers, teachers, public safety. But I know you cannot regulate these to be for Stow residents. Stow residents might get in there, or people from Stow who are working, but they would have to pass the application process that could include applications from everywhere. So we should understand, we aren't creating these homes right for Stow. Also, we've got big housing developments that we're reviewing and planning board, and there's a requirement for all of them to be providing affordable units. And those units are at no cost to the taxpayers or require any funds, like, from CPC. So just so you know, there are some other aspects to it, but I'd like to see such a thorough plan for the land, but I wanted everyone to understand, these won't just be given to Stow people when they're ready.
Thank you. I'll take a speaker here.
Oh, yeah. My name's Brian from Wheeler Road. I, I don't, I don't come to every town meeting, but every town meeting I come, I've been at, the Stow Municipal Affordable Trust is asking for community funds to fund development projects. My understanding is that we are at the 10% mandated amount, and I just want to call out that, I mean, a million one is a lot of money for what is a nonessential project. And whether you believe in, whatever your views on affordable housing are, is, is, is up to you, but it bears, you should bear in mind, this is a nonessential capital expenditure, and, and it's a, it's an expensive, nonessential expenditure. So I would just encourage you to think about, in light of the, the comments we've heard about all of the capital expenditures and the costs rising, if this is the kind of project that, that deserves this kind of allocation from, of town funds.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, here.
Hi, Trish Crawford, Harvard Road. I have a couple of questions. One is the expiring units. I know that's an issue across the state, because there were not restrictions put in in perpetuity to begin with, and I'm wondering if that's the case with this. I have a second question first. And I also hope that steps are taken to make sure that doesn't happen in the future, because we then have more requirements. The second question, the previous, a previous speaker touched on, I hear the same information when people talk about affordable housing, it's for, you know, residents, people work in town, et cetera, et cetera. I wonder if you have any analytics to support that? Because I suspect, although this is just a supposition, I suspect that there are seniors who live in town who are hit with the higher, higher cost of taxes to support these projects, but they are not the people who would move to these projects and then sell their home. So I don't know if you have any analytics. So I'm looking for some answers on both of those.
Mike, can you answer that?
Sure. On the, on the first topic, in, in the early '90s, the, the deed restriction was changed so that now all units built are in perpetuity. But the units that we're talking about were built in 1985, and at that point, the deed restriction was written differently, so that they were actually expiring now, so that that will never happen again.
And there's no way to go back and fix any of that?
Well, that'll be a separate project.
Okay.
You know, so there may be, there may be, you know, we would, one way to do this is to go back to those people and offer them a payment now to accept a restriction in the future, and so that, which would be a lot cheaper than buying, building a new unit. So. We've talked about this in the past, about, about buy-down. We actually did this, I think, one of the first CPC expenditures was to, was to extend at Pilot Grove, was to extend. I think when Pilot Grove was built, those, those were not in perpetu-
in perpetu, in perpetuity, and those were, and we use, I think one of the first uses, I can't, don't quote me on this, but I think one of the first uses of CPC funds in town was to buy those, buy those into, and make those in perpetuity.
So people were able to buy them at an affordable rate?
Right.
But then could sell them at a market rate?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
No, no, so that they, they were, that's what, we bought.
No, I understand that you wanted to extend it, but without that extension?
Right. After certain years, like for instance, after 30 years, if it was a 30-year restriction, then after 30 years, yes, you could sell it at a market rate.
Okay. And on the analytics?
On the second, the analytics, so when I brought, I'm sorry.
I'm going to move on to another speaker. Sorry, we'll get back to that.
Okay, as you wish, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Over here.
I wanted to speak up as someone who lives in affordable housing in Stowe. I. Excuse me. Living in Stowe has really been good for me. I. I moved to Stowe because I was getting out of a really bad situation. I have, thank you. I was getting out of an abusive marriage, and I've really needed to have my own place. I, God, I'm sorry. I've really needed, God, my knees are shaking. After getting out of that situation, I've really needed a, a place that's quiet, a place that's calm, a place that has good neighbors, that has nature, and, and not only, not only would I not be able to live in Stowe without affordable housing, but I wouldn't be able to afford to have my own place. And after, and after getting out of that situation, I've. It's been very healing to live in Stowe, and because I've had this stability, I've been able to take steps to further my career and increase my income. And I really hope that, that this opportunity can be extended to other people. And once my income does raise above that line, I plan to stay in Stowe, because honestly, I love it here.
I think we're going to move on. You can, you can come back. We'll take a person, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Mike Menett, 57 Old Bolton Road. I just want to say, I support this project and affordable housing, and I support more municipalities building affordable housing. It was mentioned that developers, and there are projects coming in that will be required to meet affordable housing requirements, but it's my understanding that typically they target the median AMI, the 80%, rather than targeting the other needs for the very and extremely low income. So I'm wondering on this particular project, whether you'll be targeting those lower income thresholds rather than just the 80% AMI.
Go ahead.
So typically for ownership, it's very difficult without other sort of subsidy to address the 50% income level. Normally that's done in, with rental, you know, with affordable rentals. There, the one, the exception without the Habitat for Humanity, which is a very different model, and the, and the units that were proposed for Sudbury Road and Pine Point Road, those two units are going to be at the 50%, 50% AMI level. For us to, with, at this level of subsidy, we're, we're modeling for 80% just because these are going to be ownership units, and otherwise the gap would be too large, and we really couldn't afford to make up that subsidy. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just also, you know, so, one of the previous speakers said that we're at 10%. We're only at 7.1% right now. If all the currently, the projects that are currently planned are built, we might, we will potentially be over 10%, but right now we're at 7.1%.
Yes, sir, here.
Hi, Mike Jordan, 166 Packard Road. I understand that the Baker Administration is currently putting considerable pressure on towns that, that are close to MBTA stations to, to provide additional housing near MBTA stations. Red Acre Road is kind of close to the train station. Could somebody comment as to whether or not, you know, this particular patch of land would be more appropriate for, for that kind of, of housing than, than, than the kind that's being proposed?
This is a, a very, a rather complex new thing, and we don't really have guidelines about that yet, and I will let the planning board speak to that. However, the density that is called for in those are 15 units per acre, so that would be, since we have about two and a half acres, that would be putting 40, over 40 units here. So that, that's really not feasible on this, and, and those guidelines that are, that are out are really not feasible for a town like Stowe, frankly, in my personal opinion, given that we don't have the water and sewer infrastructure to be supporting 15 units per acre. But that's kind of a whole separate topic, but one of, there are, there are potential zoning maneuvers that could happen that can make this either retroactively or even now include this parcel, so this parcel could be included in that. But that is, is unfortunately very complicated, pretty new, and I think that the planning board has some long-term plans about how to do that. I, I ask, you know, if you would like more information, I'd address my questions directly to planning board.
Yeah, thank you. I agree that these, these requirements are unreasonable for, for a town like Stowe. I, I just, you know, wondered if something could be done in that direction on this parcel. And admittedly, the density is far higher than we would, we would want to see.
Yes, the conversations have occurred, but it's going to be complicated. It's going to take probably years, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, over here.
Courtney Fretsch, Boxborough Road. I'd like to speak a little about the use of CPA funds for affordable housing. The Community Preservation Act is in part for, to, for building affordable housing. So this is not, in my, in my estimation, a non-essential expenditure. We enacted the Community Preservation Act in order to, to provide funding for certain areas that were, tended to be overlooked or seen as non-essential, areas that were not getting funding. And affordable housing is often controversial and difficult to fund. So this money, in, in this case, is, 900,000 of the 1.1 million are reserved for affordable housing. It can't be spent on anything else. And we need to get to our 10% affordable housing in order not to have aggressive building projects coming in that we can't regulate with zoning because of the, the state's laws that are trying to increase affordable housing. This is exactly what this is for, and it is essential, as the woman spoke, building housing for people to come to our town and live here the way we have the privilege of living if we have the, the means is highly essential in my regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, over here.
Hi, Abby Morgan, 20 Railroad Ave. I would, I was also going to say that we are not at the 10%, but even if we were at the 10%, it's a percentage, and so it changes every year. So having more affordable housing that we're trying to accomplish is a good thing. That way we can be ahead of the game. That's why this project is so important. Also, to the idea that people who were going to live there may not be Stowe residents, the house is in Stowe. The people who live in those houses will be Stowe residents. So regardless of whether they came from Stowe or they came from another town, this is a town that we, you know, it's a good place to grow up in and a place to come back to, isn't that our motto? So we want people to grow up here, we want people to come back here regardless of where they started. So I very much support this, and I encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Kathy Spira, 74 West Acton Road, Stowe. I am 100% in support of this project. For those who haven't been in town for a long time, there's a very long history that the town has with this site. I think we've seen much worse proposals there, and I think that the overall outcome that we've had for this property is a great one. I do have two specific questions for you, Mike, about the funding proposal. And it really gets to the last summary point on your slide, which is that it's important to use those funds to build as many units as we can. This is a relatively small number of units for a large amount of money when you look at some of the other projects that have been funded from CPA funds in Stowe, like Plantation. So one, I guess, is, is SMT paying itself back for the land from the CPA funds? I know you put the initial investment in. And then my second question is, how much money is currently in SMT's coffers, if you will, from, that's been set aside from developers? Or, you know, what are you expecting this year? And could not any of those funds be put toward this project? Thanks.
Two excellent questions. Thank you. The first one is about the, I think just about the reimbursements of the cost, and without, this is a kind of a pro forma, and we're taking, looking at total cost. As we go forward, and their actual detailed, detailed project proposal, we'll actually have better idea of the numbers. I don't really anticipate that the initial investment from, from SMT is going to be able to be paid back. But that, it's included in the total project cost here, but not necessarily. I, I have a feeling that the construction cost overruns are going to eat up any additional, those additional funds. So I, that's, I think that's the most likely situation, but until we actually have a proposal, and we, you know, you know, as you've done these projects, when you actually look at the site and you start, you know, getting the nuts and bolts, things will, will pop up that we didn't expect. Like for instance, utility, utility costs are, are like the running utility lines we talked about, for instance, in the conservation land, there's also the possibility of like a municipal well at some point in the future, and should we put those pipes in now or not? Should it be part of this project or separately? I think there's a lot of questions that will come up. And what now, I think we have about 100, I will, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Cynthia Perkins as, I think we have about $119,000 currently, plus a few hundred out of the dow, and the idea with our funds is that we would like them to be, we would like to use our funds mostly for pre-development type things where, where we would be, where we would get paid back at the end of the project. But right now, this is not possible. One other question you had about, that was the cost, per unit cost, and in, for instance...
Mike, you need to wrap it up.
Yes. Sorry, I'm trying to address the questions. The rental property, large rental developments have a much lower unit, per unit cost because of the ability to use tax credits to, that are federally available for a lot of the funding and a lot of construction costs. This type of homeownership, we're actually at the low end, usually subsidies between 150 and 180,000 dollars per unit, and so we're about at, in the, in that range.
All right. Yes, sir. Over here.
Mark Forbes, 39 Adams Drive. Just a quick question on, what happens to the funds that, these are owner occupied units, correct? And they're owner occupied units, and once they get sold, where do the funds go back to?
So these are, these are, are sold, the, the residents will, or the occupants will buy, will buy that unit, and when they sell, their purchase price will be limited to the current affordable price. And that's, again, is, is indexed to the median income and, and the interest rate. So people can sell this, can buy an affordable unit, and if they hold it for 10 years, sell it at a profit, but the profit is not a market rate profit, it's, it's still...
I, I think the answer to the question is, the initial purchase price, that money is part of the project.
Correct.
What we're voting for here is to reduce the purchase price and to, to make it an affordable unit.
Correct, but there's going to be some kind of a, you're going to pay, have to pay the contractor and stuff like this, and there's going to be a loss. I understand it's going to be a loss because it's affordable housing, but I, I noticed some of the affordable housing in Stowe is pretty expensive. I was just wondering, when it gets sold, is, is, you know, what the difference is? Who gets, who gets the difference, if there's any difference? Do they go right to the contractor, or does CPA, CPC funds get reimbursed?
I understand that question.
You got, you're going with that?
I understand the question, no.
Okay.
May I? So what we're asking for is the difference between the construction cost and what the sale cost will be to those, those. So this money is, is the difference between what it takes, takes to build and what the funds will be from selling those units. So this money is actually makes up that gap, so it's not going to be, there's going to be extra money. And if it costs less per, that, that money won't be spent on CPC, and we'll, and we'll stay in the CPC funds.
Okay, so if I mistake, this $3 million worth of expense that it costs to build the units and the CP funds add up the difference?
Right.
So if you sell each unit for $500,000, that, that gets rid of the cost?
It, it would, but, right.
If you did.
Yeah, if you did, right, exactly.
Okay, but you're assuming it's not going to, it's going to be significant.
Well, we can't, by, by statute, we can't. We have, this has to be affordable.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Guy Washburn, Red Acre Road. Can I call the question?
We're going to take one.
Catherine Haberly, Indian Ridge Road. I think we should call this.
All right, we have two requests to end debate and proceed to a vote. So I'll take that as a motion and a second. So we'll need a two-thirds vote up. I'll actually, instead of doing that with, with the clickers, I'll do it with cards. All in favor of ending debate and proceeding to a vote, please raise your cards up high. So this is to end debate. All opposed, please raise your cards up high. I will call that unanimous in here.
Mr. Moderator, it's unanimous in the hallway and the cafeteria to suspend debate.
So we will call that nearly unanimous, clearly more than two-thirds, and debate has ended. So now we will proceed to an actual vote, and I'm going to do this one with clickers just because it's a, it's a large amount of money and some people wouldn't want to feel pressured. So why don't we bring up the, we're ready to open the vote?
Article 42.
Article 42. The vote is open. We're using the clickers and not the green cards. So vote yes if you are in favor of the motion under Article 42, and no if you are opposed. And we'll keep it open a minute or so. It might take a few seconds when a lot of people all click all at once. And some, some of the people that live off White Pond Road, we have special clickers for them. So we'll keep the voting open for another 20 or 30 seconds. We have 210 votes. I don't see the yeses and noses until we've closed the, the voting. That's in case we put it up on the screen. It doesn't affect people's votes. And it looks like we can close the voting. We have 211 votes, 193 yes and 18 no, so the motion passes. And Article 43. And article 43.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on article 43.
We have a second.
Second.
We have, uh, I believe there was a, uh, debate on no act, or a comment that was going to be made on no action.
Well, not for me. Uh, Capitol Planning voted to support no action this morning.
Thank you. Yes?
Andy Crosby, Town Hall Restoration.
A little louder, I can't hear.
Sorry. Andy Crosby, Town Hall Restoration Committee. The committee supports this motion. We understand that rebuilding or restoring the town hall is very expensive and we, we want to work with the other boards and committees as well as Stowe residents in order to determine what the best solution is for this town hall. We look forward to working with the commi, uh, with the town to, uh, in this discussion and, um, making the best decision for the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, is there any other debate on no action on article 43? Seeing none, I'm going to use the green cards for this one. It requires a majority vote. So all in favor of no action, please raise your cards up high. All opposed to no action, please raise your cards up. I will call that unanimous in the auditorium. And it looks like three noses outside.
All in favor of ending debate in the cafeteria in the hallway.
So I will, it's not unanimous, but it's, uh, very close that passes. And no, we have no action on article 43. Article 44, I'm going to, um, before we do article 44, it's past noon, I'm going to ask if people want to do a 10-minute break. No, or keep going through. So raise your, I'll, I'll, I'll take the, uh, the vote from those inside. Raise your cards if you want to take a break. Raise your cards if you don't want to take a break. So that's overwhelming. Uh, that would be my vote too, by the way, but I didn't want to, uh, so article 44, uh, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator. I move it to town vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow the sum of $8,850,000 to pay for the project consisting of the design, construction, and equipping of renovations to the Randall Library, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to fund the said project, to appropriate and transfer $1 million from the Community Preservation Fund comprised of $300,000 from historical allocation and $700,000 from the unreserved fund balance in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to be expended under the direction of the library director in consultation with the Community Preservation Committee to design and construct renovations to the historical portion of the Randall Library. And further, to fund the said project, to appropriate and transfer $900,000 from the two library trust funds as follows. $500,000 from the Randall Library Trust and $400,000 from the Hale High School Trust Fund. And further, to authorize a select board or its designee to apply for, accept, and expand any funds that may be received from donations or fundraising or any other funding sources for the purpose of funding the said Randall Library renovation project. And further, that to meet this appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow six, to borrow $6,706,500, that number again, $6,706,500, reduced by the sums received by donations and fundraising as authorized by Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, and/or any other enabling authority. And to issue notes and bonds of the town therefore, and the select board is further authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this vote. And further provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town on a ballot question presented to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitation on taxes imposed by Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), colloquial known as Proposition Two and a Half.
Second.
Oh, are you finally done? Do we have a second? Sorry, there were some modest changes from the warrant, so it had to be read. So we have a presentation from the Randall Library Design Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please. Welcome. I'm really excited to be here today, finally. Um, the director of the Randall Library, I'm Tina McAndrew. I'm here today with Lisa Levine.
A little louder if you could, please.
Building Committee member and Ben Newt's partner at Design Lab Architects. We are here to present the request for funds from the town to renovate the Randall Library. Before we begin, I would like to say that the initial concepts you're about to see are by no means the final product. There will be many opportunities for additional community feedback as this project goes through the design and construction phases, should it pass today and at the ballot. I will now introduce Ben, who will discuss Design Lab's philosophy and experience working with historic structures.
Well, thank you, Tina. Um, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm Ben Newt. I'm a partner at Design Lab Architects, uh, in Boston. Uh, myself, uh, and the Design Lab team, including our engineers and consultants, have been working alongside Tina and Lisa and the Building Committee members, uh, since last summer, uh, to develop the concept, uh, design content that we'll be sharing with you, uh, today. At Design Lab, uh, we have a depth of experience renovating, preserving, and adapting historic structures and we understand well the intricacies of reviving them. Uh, and with each part, project that we've completed, some of which you see on the screen here, uh, we elevate the character of the original building while adapting them to dynamic new programmatic needs and contemporary building standards. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so to achieve this, uh, we operate under a design philosophy that we call critical stewardship, uh, by which we celebrate and leverage the past for tomorrow. It is an approach to design that is based on the universal responsibility to history in the context of a place as well as the environment as value through the community that the building serves.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lisa Levine. I represent the Building Committee today. Um, we're going to quickly take you through, oh, sorry, next slide. Um, we're going to take you through the process that brings us here today and a period of Q and A will follow. Next slide. The Building Committee began meeting in November of 2020. Design Lab was selected and began working on a preliminary design in July of 2021. The designers toured the site, gathered input from library staff and town residents and reported to the committee as the concept evolved. Residents were invited to a townwide forum on Zoom in November to see the concepts and provide feedback. The Building Committee presented their choice for the design to the town administrator in December. Next. Uh, community and library staff input has been a part of the Building Committee's process from the outset and was received through a variety of methods. Our monthly meetings are held on Zoom for easy attendance. Next. Uh, consistent themes emerged from all the responses shaping our guiding principles for assessing the project. These principles are listed here. All this preliminary work brings us to today where we're seeking approval to fund the next stage of design and then construction of a new addition.
As Lisa just described, our concept design effort established the program and project framework. Uh, moving forward, if approved, uh, the planning and documentation effort is anticipated to take 12 months, uh, in three primary design phases, uh, schematic design, design development, and then finally, construction documentation. Uh, for reference, we typically refer to each phase as designing at incrementally more detailed levels. Uh, during schematic design, we say that we're designing at the scale of the building. At design development, the scale of the room. And construction documentation at the scale of the object. Um, next slide, please. Uh, it's important to note that, uh, there will be ample opportunities for community interaction and feedback through the schematic design and development processes and that's something that we really advocate for. Um, the Building Committee and Design Team are looking forward to hearing further from the community, uh, to refine the design. Uh, next slide. Uh, we orchestrate this type of process, uh, on nearly all of the projects that we work with, uh, particularly, uh, municipal projects like this. Uh, and that's because we wholeheartedly believe that the best design solutions come from a variety of voices and sources. Uh, it's not just the architects, but more importantly, it's the community members that the building will serve. Um, so we'll organize site visit, town hall type meetings, and additional community forums to garner this feedback and iteratively build design strategies from it. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this effort is all in support of a project that is ready to be bid for construction in the spring of next year, uh, with construction commencing a few months after that. Uh, we anticipate for a building, uh, project like this, that the construction process will take about one and a half to two years once it begins. Uh, next slide.
Thank you, Ben. Having worked at the library for more than two years, I can now share with you the issues challenging the building. There are multiple ADA violations, including non-compliant restrooms and stairs, a building entrance that is not universally accessible. The upper levels of both the historic building and the 70s edition cannot support book stacks and the ADA lift needs constant repair and attention, not to mention it's very difficult to use. Additionally, there are significant envelope, um, envelope issues throughout the building. This view you see here of the sloping windows leak every time it rains outside, it rains inside. Deferred maintenance continued to make things worse. Next slide. Here you can see the inside of the sloping windows that you saw on the previous slide. A semi-permanent tarp has been installed to funnel the rain into, rainwater into a bucket. The second floor also has significant leaks that require buckets to collect water during the rain and snow seasons. Next slide. The library does not have a fire, fire protection sprinkler system. With the exception of some recent updates, much of the older mechanical and electrical equipment is beyond its useful life, does not meet today's energy performance or code requirements, and needs to be replaced. Next slide. From a landscape perspective, the current 1970s edition obscures the original composition of the historic library. The entrance sequence into the addition is compromised. It's dark, obscured, and hardly welcoming, not to mention the accessible path from parking is challenging to navigate. We think there is an immense opportunity to make the library more noticeable from Crescent Street. The views from Crescent Street should invite visitors to stop and patronize the library and the entrance should be safer and more accessible for all. Programmatically, there is little opportunity for outdoor activities. The existing roof terrains, terrace, and amphitheater get little to no use. Next. Even if the envelope and code issues were addressed, the saddest part of the library is the challenge facing staff to provide community services. Randall does not have a dedicated children's room or teen room. It lacks program spaces inside and out. There is no availability to host multiple programs simultaneously. There is a lack of technology infrastructure. The historical spaces are underutilized and staff have limited space to work or eat. Currently, adult library programs are scheduled in the evenings so as not to conflict with daily children's programs. For these reasons, the current library does not serve the community.
Okay. Um, so following our assessment of the building that Tina just described, uh, as well as staff interviews and informed by community input, um, we developed, uh, what we refer to as a building program. Um, and this was based on all of the information that we heard from all of these stakeholders in terms of the types of spaces that would be desirable within the library and the function for which they'd ideally be used. Um, some of these spaces did already exist in the library and that's what you see on the left, uh, in this slide and that they just needed to be right-sized, uh, for, for the program. Other spaces don't exist at all, uh, which you see in that middle bar. Uh, we categorize these types of spaces, uh, by the primary use that they would support and combined, on the right, they created our proposed building program. Uh, some of the highlights include a quiet reading space acoustically separated from the rest of the library, expanded and improved young adult and children's spaces, uh, space for a library of things, and additional staff and technology support spaces. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so with the goal to achieve as many program components as possible, uh, we developed a series of planning strategies in increasing levels of intervention. Uh, the first, uh, strategy, reuse, which was on, uh, on the left here, uh, we looked to simply repurpose the existing building as is, in that no new space was created. We were simply sort of reorganizing, uh, spaces within the footprint.
A little louder.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Uh, the second, uh, look to increase the size of the 1970s edition, uh, by actually building a level on top of it, uh, over the existing first floor. And the last strategy we explored on the right, which will be, uh, Lisa will be describing more in a moment here, uh, was replacing the 70s edition entirely with a new structure that was better proportioned in size to support all of the program, uh, goals and spaces we identified.
So the Building Committee evaluated the design concepts in relation to meeting the goals expressed by the community, the overall projected costs, and positioning Randall Library to meet the needs of today and the future. Option A, keeping the building as is and bringing up to code, achieved the fewest goals. Option B, adding on to the current building, achieved some but not of all the, not all of the goals, leaving inefficient space and a patchwork of building systems. Option C, rebuilding and addition, achieves all the program goals, optimizes efficient use of space, and uses modern building systems that are easier and less expensive to maintain. Next slide. Based on regulations regarding innovate renovations and building code, all concepts would require bringing the facility up to code. Option C offers the best opportunity to create a fully functional building using today's construction techniques rather than trying to fit a new design onto a failing infrastructure. The projected costs are comparable and the committee feels that removing the 1975 edition and building new creates the solution for a safe, accessible, and well-functioning library while addressing the repair and maintenance needs of the historic building.
As Lisa mentioned, option C provides the best solution to meet the program, building, and landscape needs for a 21st century library. The historic areas will keep their traditional character and would be reprogrammed for new uses. As a library director, staff and I would be able to provide patrons with quiet workspace, tutoring areas, a dedicated children's room, indoor and outdoor program space, and many other things not available. Option C allows for safer access with landscape design that includes sidewalks for universal access. And as we stated, this option incorporates all the spaces, spaces of a 21st century library that the community input expressed during feedback sessions. This is not a perfect solution, but rather one that will provide an updated, safe, accessible, functioning, and expanded library for the community.
Um, so the design team greatly values, uh, the historic building, uh, that is Randall Library. Its stately proportions and prominence perched atop Library Hill is something that we think should really be celebrated, um, as should its broader role in history within the community. Uh, next slide. Randall Library is one of many prominent historic buildings and we're inspired by this history and want to leverage it, uh, for the future. Next slide. Uh, as the design progresses, uh, we look to draw inspiration and leverage this historic character, including features from the building itself, like the strong vertical, verticality of the exterior composition, the exterior material palette, and the impressive proportions and details of the primary interior spaces. Next slide.
So in speaking with the historic character that Ben just described, you're looking at a view of what the restored original entrance may look like. You can see a glimpse of the new connection between the historic building and the new addition. The elements of the historic building that were recently restored utilizing CPC money, including windows, floors, and lights among others, will be maintained as that work was recently completed. Next. This is a view of what the second floor of the addition may feel like, with a staircase that connects to the lower level and an elevator off-screen to the right, making the addition accessible. Both floors in the new design will be able to structurally support any desired library programs and the weight of all materials unlike the current building. Next. Here you see the current entry again. As I mentioned, accessibility is a major challenge. It is not a welcoming first impression and the historic building is completely absorbed by the 70s edition. Next. Again, this is not the final product of what the exterior of the building may look like, but it represents the approximate size and location of an addition. We see a major opportunity to refocus attention on the original features of the historic building. The initial concept allows for the entirety of the corner turret to be re-exposed and historic entrance restored. The landscape allows for outdoor program space and safer accessibility to both entrances. A long Common Road is an opportunity for more social space at the entry of the library. This area could create real connections to the town common space. The new building will be pushed back from Common Road further than the current configuration to allow for this type of space and entry sequence. Next. Next.
Just pointing out, we're at 14 minutes.
Okay. So this is the current view on Crescent Street. Next. And here is a possible rendition of the same view. The removal of the sloped windows would allow for the original windows of the library to be reintroduced. Next. This is the view of the library going toward Library Hill. Next. This is possibly what it could look like with a newer addition in the historic space, with the possibility of sidewalks and outdoor space which allows patrons to arrive safely, park, and enter. Next. Based on figures voted at this town meeting, the cost to the taxpayer would be anywhere between 5.6 and 6.7 million if the ballot question passes. However, as you'll see from the next slide, the fundraising efforts will continue through the duration of this project, thus decreasing the taxpayer cost further. Next.
As Tina mentioned, 24% of the funds for this will be secured after articles are approved at today's meeting. Fundraising efforts coordinated through the Revitalized Randall Campaign have already started, and 130 individuals and families have pledged support for the project. This work, including seeking grants, business support, will continue through the duration of the design and construction.
And finally, I'd just like to say, should this project pass, with the approval of the select board, additional Stowe residents will be added to the building committee, and the decisions for the design of the library will not be made in a silo. The trustees and building committee want you to be engaged in this process because this is your library and your community, and we want to hear from all of you to make an informed decision about making Randall Library the library that you all want. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had a presentation. Do we have a recommendation from Capitol Planning?
We do, Mr. Moderator. Capitol Planning voted unanimously to recommend support for this article. It's a restoration of a town-owned building. We're responsible for the upkeep, as we've been doing for years here. And as we've seen, approximately half, if not more, of this is just to get things up to code. So that much has to be done, and we support doing the rest of it as well. We often ask these projects for some additional fundraising, outside funds, what have you done in that area? And excellent support here. Just an ongoing fundraising, over 100 families. The Library Trust Fund and the Hale High School Funds have stepped up very big in this. Use of the CPA funds is helpful. And also pulling back the funds previously appropriated for other things to apply them here, we support very much. So we definitely support this article.
And did we have a selectman's recommendation?
Moderator, the board unanimously supports passage of Article 44. This provides a reasonably priced way to create the programming space needed for a modern library and to remedy the structural defects that have always been present in the library building, but that have grown worse over time. If passed along with Articles 45 and 46, it will minimize the impact on taxpayers.
Thank you, and I believe the Randall Library trustees have a recommendation.
Hi, I'm Marcy Echol, Adams Drive. I'm Chair of the Randall Library Trustees. We support this project. We're excited and energized and look forward to the myriad ways it will continue to connect our community. For too long, the Randall Library has been neglected, and the physical condition of the building has deteriorated to a point of major concern. Randall has so much to offer: books, of course, but also friendly and knowledgeable staff, programs for all ages, e-resources, the library of things, and more. But it also has a constantly leaky roof, a bathroom where a sixth grader was recently stuck for 45 minutes, inflexible spaces, and heat that works intermittently. There's no space for the staff to eat lunch, no elevator, and lots of tall ceilings that take up square footage but don't offer any usable space. It's important to note again that the designs are not final, and we will have more opportunity for public comment during the next phase. But the ideas represented are so important to our library's future: flexible use spaces, more light, updated systems, more accessibility, usable outdoor space, and plenty of room for the littles, the tweens, the teens, and the adults. Close to half of the cost of the library is just bringing the building up to code. The rest is bringing it into the 21st century. Libraries are essential. They provide unfettered access to resources and services, always for free and open to all. A revitalized Randall is about more than borrowing books. It's about serving our community, adapting to changing needs, and helping build and sustain an important social infrastructure to keep our town connected. We ask for your support so together we can bring forth a vibrant, vital, and safe revitalized Randall Library.
Thank you. Are there any questions or other debate on the motion under Article 44? Yes, I guess you're first.
My name is Dan Barstow, 99 Pine Point Road in Stowe. When my wife and I first moved here some 30 years ago, we were looking around the town. We saw the library, beautiful building, friendly staff, great collection of books that helped us make a decision to move here. Then, a month ago, we went to an event, an art show, that showed the library as a wonderful, welcoming place for the community. But it struck me in that, that over these 30 years, the role of the library in a community is no longer a place you go to get books. It's that, plus it's many more. And I guess I'd like to ask, how do you envision this enabling a different perspective on what this library is for our community?
Thank you. I couldn't agree more. I think libraries have morphed a lot over the last 20, 30 years with not just technology but the changes. You know, Randall was started with 100 books or so, and now it's morphed into video games and art shows. And I see it as a place for people to gather. That is my passion. I've tried during COVID to make Randall open to all. So my vision would be to see it host art shows, host bigger community programs, have it be a place where people think of to go, not just because, oh, I'm going to go check out a book, but I can, I don't know, have a cup of coffee and read the newspaper. It's supposed to be a warm, inviting place for the community, and that's what I would like to see it become again.
Thank you. Yes, over here.
Hello, my name is Jen Sylvester from 17 Nyra Road.
Right up next to the mic.
Sorry, there we go. As an avid supporter and user of the valuable services that Randall Library provides to the Stowe community, and the daughter of a town librarian in Western Massachusetts, I understand and support the need to renovate the building. I'd like to take this opportunity to share the importance of incorporating the following items when designing the renovation project. Install high-efficiency, all-electric heating and cooling equipment to demonstrate a commitment to eliminating onsite fossil fuel use while maintaining a lower operational cost due to the low electric rates in town. Solar-ready design of the roofing and electrical infrastructure, if possible, to allow for easy installation of solar panels at some point in time in the future. And seek a building certification, if possible, such as LEED, which stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. All of these aspects of building design will allow the library to be a steward of energy efficiency and environmental consideration, and act as a resource for the town residents to understand that climate-friendly building design is possible without compromising function. I appreciate and look forward to the ability to provide additional community input as the design progresses. Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you. Yes, we've been waiting.
Yes, hi. Missy Reed, Apple Blossom Lane. Really quick, first, it's a wonderful project, all the way behind it. But I am curious, what's the GSF involved in this? Like, what's the renovation square footage and the addition square footage? Just to be able to put the $9 million price tag kind of in perspective.
Sure, I can answer that. So the Scheme C, the sort of build a new addition scheme that we presented, represents around, in round numbers, 8,000 gross square feet, of which around 6,500 to 7,000 is what we call net usable square feet.
Yeah.
So that's about what we're targeting.
For the new, or for the whole renovation?
A little louder, folks, please.
8,000, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Catherine Haberly, Indian Ridge Road. I'd like to call, end a debate, and vote, please.
So we have a request to end debate and proceed to a vote. That requires a two-thirds vote. I'm going to do that with the green voting cards. All in favor of ending debate, please raise your cards. All opposed to ending debate, please raise your cards. I'm going to call that unanimous in the auditorium. How are we outside?
The majority is in favor of ending debate.
Is it more than two-thirds?
Unan-
How many people are out there? Okay. How about the cafeteria?
Unanimous to end debate.
The majority of people are inside, and it was near unanimous or unanimous inside. So I'm going to call that clearly in excess of two-thirds, and debate ends. We will proceed to a vote on Article 44. I'm going to use the clickers, the electronic clickers for the vote on Article 44. This will also require a two-thirds vote. So we're ready. Voting is open. I will keep it open for a minute or more. Now, I started saying that earlier. It's kind of a little bit of a treat having been a moderator for over 10 years, that with the clicker, sometimes I can vote on things. Traditionally, the moderator doesn't vote, and the moderator, well, I shouldn't say doesn't vote normally. The only time the moderator would vote is to break a tie if they want. Or make a tie, yep. And this allows me to vote. It might take a few seconds if everyone's voting all at once. Once it comes back with an "okay." That's the main reason I'm actually voting, is because some folks are having trouble, and my voting clicker is coming back very quickly. I'm not sure why they're so slow. We spent a lot of Thursday and a lot of yesterday trying to make sure that the clickers were working well. So I'm going to give another 15 seconds or so. They're slowly going up still, so I'm not going to close the voting yet. Yeah, make sure that your clicker says "okay" after you voted. It hasn't gone up in a little while, so I'm going to close voting. We have 212 votes cast, and 186 yes and 26 no, so I will call that pass. Let's not, hey, excuse me. None of that. You can celebrate after the meeting. Article 43, do we have a motion? I'm sorry, Article 45, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 45 to supplement prior borrowing votes to permit the application of sale premium to pay project costs for the renovations for the Randall Library as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. And I believe the selectmen had a recommendation on this? The selectmen and the finance committee both recommend favorable action. Is there any debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote using the green voter cards. This requires a two-thirds vote. I don't, I can't find my card, but I won't use it. So all in favor of the motion under Article 45, please raise your cards up high. All opposed, please raise your cards up high. I'll call that unanimous in the hall. How are we outside? It's unanimous outside and the cafeteria.
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
So I will call that passed unanimous, and we'll go to Article 46.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article 46 to re- previously allocated funds as printed in the warrant.
We have a second? We have a motion in a second. The Finance Committee and Select Board both recommend approval. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will vote using the green cards again. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I'll call that unanimous in the hall. Unanimous outside, how's the cafeteria?
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
So I'll call that passes by unanimous voice vote. That required a majority. Article 47.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 47, transfer to stabilization fund as printed in the warrant.
The Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, we will vote again with the green voter cards. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I'll call that unanimous in the auditorium. How was outside? I can't hear you. We'll do that vote again. There was some confusion outside. All in favor of the motion under Article 47, thank you. Please raise your cards up high. All opposed, please raise your cards up high. I'll call that unanimous in the hall. Unanimous outside and the cafeteria?
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
So it passes by unanimous voice vote. Article, well, card vote. Article 48, do we have a motion?
I move that the town approve Article 48.
We have a motion in a second to approve as written in the warrant. The Finance Committee and the Select Boards both recommend approval. Is there any debate? Seeing none, I will vote again using the green cards. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. 48, raise your cards for yes. All opposed, please raise your cards. It looks unanimous inside. Unanimous outside, how's the cafeteria?
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
That passes unanimous vote for Article 48. Article 49, I'm going to take a quick break, and Jim Salvi is going to run the meeting. I'm going to get a drink. Not the drink that I'd like, but some water.
Testing. Testing. Have a motion, Ms. Sturgis.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article 49, debt rescission, as printed in the warrant.
And you have your Finance Committee recommendation in the warrant. Is there any debate on Article 49? Seeing and hearing none, this requires a simple majority. I think we'll continue the low-tech option of using the green cards. All is in favor of passing Article 49, please signify.
Thank you. I'll call that unanimous in the hall. I have one outside and in the cafeteria.
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
Thank you. Article forty-nine passes almost unanimously. Article fifty, do I have a motion, Ms. Freesha?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article fifty, uh, legal services as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Um, your finance committee recommendation is in your warrant. I understand that the select board has a recommendation on this. Select board recommends favorable action, correct?
The select board supports this article. Uh, we've had additional legal costs in town, but it's important we continue that work.
Thank you. Any debate on Article fifty? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to a vote, and while we're on a roll with a low-tech solution, we'll stick to it. All those in favor, please signify by raising your green cards. And thank you. All those against, please raise your green cards. I'll call that unanimous in the hall. Have a, again, one opposed outside and in the cafeteria?
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. So, Article fifty passes almost unanimously. Article fifty-one, do I have a motion, Ms. Birch McMichael?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article fifty-one, MS four stormwater permit requirements as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second on Article fifty-one. Again, the finance committee recommendation is in your warrant. Um, do I have any debate on Article fifty-one? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to a vote. Once again, with the green cards, simple majority. Those in favor, please signify by raising your green cards. Thank you. You can lower them. Those against, please raise your green cards. Thank you. Unanimous outside and in the cafeteria?
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, and I'll declare Article fifty-one has passed unanimously. And I don't know if the moderator wants to resume the chair. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article fifty-two as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any debate? Uh...
Mr. Moderator, I took, uh, high school math a long time ago, but sixteen thousand five hundred dollars is more than ten thousand dollars. So, capital planning, uh, on behalf of capital planning, I'd like to understand why this article was not brought before capital planning for review.
It is comprised of two separate pieces of equipment, one for eight thousand and one for eight thousand five hundred.
So, Mr. Moderator, I have a follow-up question. If this article passes, does both of those pieces of equipment, uh, get paid for, or if the article fails, neither of the pieces of equipment get purchased? Is that correct?
Yes. Or it could be split.
I'm not gonna make a motion to split, but I would, um, advise the town administrator, next time, don't put both articles in the same, both items in the same article, 'cause capital planning will wanna look at it.
If we put it on separate articles, they're still under the threshold of capital.
Totally understand, but somebody might get confused when they see the figure sixteen five and know that it's greater than ten.
Okay.
Is there any other debate? Seeing none, we will use the green cards. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, raise them high. All opposed, raise them high. See a scattering against. How did we do outside? Unanimous outside, cafeteria?
Really unanimous in the cafeteria.
So, it passes by majority vote. Uh, people that are leaving early, please remember to drop off your, uh, voting, uh, voting clickers, and the little green cards, too, would be helpful if we could keep those. Uh, Article fifty-three, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article fifty-three, purchase of cemetery equipment as printed in the warrant.
Motion in a second. Do we have any debate? I see none. We will use the green cards again. Uh, this requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards up high. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call it unanimous in the auditorium. Unanimous outside?
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
So, it passes by unanimous voice vote. Article fifty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article fifty-four for the former Gleesendale school lot as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, yes.
I have a, a question, and I don't understand why we would have some sort of change of ownership of this parcel when we really don't have a full plan for the Gleesendale area in terms of, this is, is one of the few town owns, town-owned, uh, parcels in that area. So, I, it seemed to me that would make sense to have a full, a full plan for Gleesendale before we would change any of the ownership from one group to another.
I'm on the steering committee. I don't know if I'm allowed to respond to that.
I, I can't hear you.
I'm on the steering committee. I, am I allowed to respond to the question?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Moore. I'm on the Gleesendale Steering Committee, um, and this is a part of the Gleesendale Steering Committee's bigger-
Could you speak up?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. I'll get closer. It's part of the Gleesendale Steering Committee's bigger plan for Gleesendale, um, so I'm not sure how it fits in with the town's bigger plan, but the Gleesendale Steering Committee is certainly thinking about the bigger picture for the neighborhood, and we're always looking for new members, so if you'd like to join, we would love to have you. Um, and I don't know if there's any specific questions about the lot itself, but I'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
Yes, go ahead. Uh, I'm sorry, this, this lady's been waiting, yes.
I'm gonna speak in support of the, um, lot as well. Uh, what I have to say may answer some of your questions as well. I'm Joanna Miller. I live at one twenty-seven Adams Drive. Um, and this is gonna, um, be a valuable, valuable addition to the Gleesendale area, a community gathering space. There's no walkable area for children to play there now, and, um, transferring it to the Recreation Commission will allow, um, it to be made into a play space for children.
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, Ms., uh, again, Mike Kapczynski, twelve Canterbury Road. Um, my question is possibly more procedural, is that in generally, when there's transfers from one group to another, that there's, that there's a request for whether anyone else, when other, any other groups or boards in town would be interested in this, and I wasn't, I, I'm not aware of that that has, that that happened, so.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mike Bush, twenty-five Peabody Drive. Um, I'm on the Recreation Commission, CPC as well. Um, um, Mike, uh, the previous speaker has a good point, but I'd like to also remind everybody that a number of years ago, um, the town took this parcel of land, which was formerly school property, long time ago, and offered it to all the different groups in town, all the different departments and all the different organizations, and I think that might have been about ten years ago. And it was left open to see what, who might be interested in it, an initiative, and Gleesendale came forward, and, um, it was left to proceed. Um, as it stands now, by transferring it to REC, it really doesn't change, from wherever it was, doesn't really change a lot, but it sets forward progress from pretty much ground zero to let the group in Gleesendale proceed with support that Recreation can offer in terms of anything they'd like to do. So, Recreation isn't driving it. It would be the group that's proposing something to do forward with it. And it's a minor technicality to take it from conservation to recreation, other than what resources are available that Recreation can offer in terms of development.
Thank you. Is there any other debate on the motion on your Article fifty-four? Yes, sir.
Uh, my name's William Byron. I live at four sixty-nine Gleesendale Road. Um, I just wanna make a couple of comments. Um, I don't care whose auspices this piece of property is under.
A little louder, Bill.
I'm more concerned in what they do with it, after they get control of it. Um, that property has been empty for a number of years. Let me think of, the, uh, residents immediately adjacent to this property have, whether legally or not, used this property as overflow parking when someone might have, uh, an occasion to, uh, such as a gathering at their home, which brings a great number of vehicles there, um, a function after a wedding or a funeral. There's very little parking that goes along with most of the residences right down there. So, I would like to see them have the ability to use this for that. And, and I'm not opposed to anything else going there, or how it's used. Um, in more recent years, uh, the residents have also used it themselves to have a couple of gatherings called the Gleesendale Days, where the residents all got together to meet and greet one another, which we don't often have the opportunity to do in these days. Um, and it was rather nice. Uh, they provided food amongst themselves and, and had a few activities for the children that came. Um, I ju- I'm just commenting on my own behalf of, of how it gets used and how it gets restricted for use, is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, over here.
Kathy Spira, seventy-four, West Acton Road, and speaking as Conservation Director. So, the history of this parcel is that in the nineteen sixties, right after the Conservation Commission had been created, which was a long time ago, town meeting actually voted to transfer this parcel of land to the Conservation Commission, quote, "until another use can be found for it." So, I think the commission was viewed as newly created, needing land. It was a convenient home. The commission has not managed the property. In fact, I don't think we realized until fairly recently that we owned it. And, um, the residents of Gleesendale came forward with a proposal for a park on the property. They've worked with a landscape designer. They have a plan for the property. They've also worked with the planning board and with the Conservation Commission, along with the REC Commission. I think if there are folks that are interested in continuing the current, um, informal parking arrangement, there is space on that plan for a couple of parking spaces, and having the REC Commission own it and have that kind of a plan in place is probably better than having the Conservation Commission own it, because typically, we wouldn't allow parking there. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hi, I'm Laurie Burnett from seventy-six Taylor Road, and I just wanna speak up in support of this property. I think it's been empty for a long time. The community, the local group, has decided that they would like to use it for a purpose that everybody can benefit from, and, um, I think it's important for us to support local voices speaking up about their area. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. Byron.
I'm back. Uh, William Byron, four sixty-nine Gleesendale Road. Um, so, uh, I was privy to seeing a, an informal plan for this, so, um, see, I don't have many years left, so I don't care what happens, really, but, but, um, if we're going to be afforded the possibility of using that as parking, if not, so be it. But, four spaces won't do it if you have a large crowd at your house, can't fit them all in your own driveway or on the street. Uh, we also, the, the historical commission, I believe it was, um, conducted a, a walk, a village walk down there, and, uh, I personally thought if they got ten people down there, they'd be very lucky. They had thirty-five people show up to walk through that village and hear a little bit of the history of it. So, not having anywhere else to park, that lot was full of cogs. So, I just want to keep in mind what I'm, what I'm hinting at here, is all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My third time, but, uh, Catherine Haberly, Indian Ridge Road, I would like to end debate.
End debate.
I, end debate. I see no one else waiting in line, so I will, uh, simply go to a vote. Uh, this requires a two-thirds vote, but I'm gonna try the green cards first and see if, if, uh, it needs a count. All in favor of the motion under Article fifty-four, please raise your cards up high. All opposed, please raise your cards up high. Here, it's not unanimous, but it's near-unanimous. There's one troublemaker voting though. We're, we're outside, it's well over two-thirds. How is the cafeteria?
Cafeteria's unanimous.
Then I will call that, uh, passes by two-thirds vote. Article fifty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article fifty-five as printed in the warrant.
This is the Green Advisory Committee. I think we had a slide on this. No, that's okay.
Don't worry, I have one slide. Okay, my name is Sharon Brownfield, and I'm a member of the New Committee, the Green, Green Advisory Committee. This committee was formed last year by your select board, and since that time, we have been working hard to reduce greenhouse, to big, develop a plan to reduce our greenhouse gases, mitigate the, against climate change impacts, and to really advise the town, all the town, committees, uh, businesses, et cetera, about steps that they could do to help, um, reduce their carbon emissions. Um, what we're requesting is fifteen thousand dollars as an initial budget for next year. This budget would be used to help us in terms of communicating with everyone, to, uh, start education around the different initiatives we're looking, getting input from you about what we could be doing as a town to help in this critical effort. As you see up there, those are our committee members. Uh, please feel free to contact everyone. Uh, we are hope, uh, holding meetings every Thursday, every month, uh, the first and third. They're open meetings, and we really would like people's input. Um, Arnie Epstein is our chair, and you see the names, and there, we have representatives from various boards on that. Um, that's my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Green Advisory Committee funds? And I see none. This re- oh, this requires a majority vote, and we'll use the green cards. All in favor, please raise your cards up high. All opposed, please raise your cards up high. I see one, two. Unanimous outside, how's the cafeteria?
Cafeteria's unanimous.
Great. That passes, uh, the article under, the motion under Article fifty-five passes. Article fifty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by amending Article eleven, Personnel Administration, Sections nine, eleven, and twenty, as stated in the warrant.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any debate? I do not see any. Uh, we, this requires a majority vote. I will, uh, use the green cards. So, all in favor, please raise your cards up high. All opposed, please raise your cards up high. I will call that unanimous in the hall. I will call that unanimous in the hall. Unanimous outside?
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
So that passes by unanimous voice vote, or hand vote. Article fifty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article fifty-seven, Road Acceptance of Brandy Mead Circle, as printed in the warrant.
Is there any debate? This is a revote of previously accepted streets that apparently the Land Court or someone lost our documentation. This requires a two-thirds vote, but I'm going to use the green cards. So all in favor, please raise your cards up. All opposed, please raise your cards up. I'll call that unanimous inside. Unanimous outside and the cafeteria?
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
So that passes by unanimous hand vote. Article fifty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting the current Section six point one in its entirety and replacing it with a new Section six point one, as printed in the warrant. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. We have a letter from the Planning Board that they had a hearing on this, which is one of the requirements to do a zoning article. Was there any debate on the changes in proposed, on the motion under Article fifty-eight? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. We'll try the green cards again. They seem to work well. All in favor, please raise your cards up high. All opposed, please raise your cards up high. I'll call that unanimous inside. Unanimous outside. We did have one vote against it. Cafeteria?
Unanimous in favor.
So I'm going to call that unanimous because it requires seven people to challenge my vote. Article fifty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Sections five point three point three, five point three point ten point four, and five point three point sixteen therein, as stated in Sections A, B, C, and D of this article, as printed in the warrant. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
We have a motion in a second. Again, there was a Planning Board report and recommendation. Is there any debate on this? I do not see any debate. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. We'll try with the green cards, since there's no debate. All in favor, please raise your cards up high. All opposed, please raise your cards up high. I'll call that unanimous in the hall. And unanimous outside, how's the cafeteria?
Cafeteria's unanimous in favor.
So I'll call that as a unanimous, passes by unanimous hand vote.
Mr. Moderator, if I could indulge you for a moment?
I just want to first, before we end today's town meeting, to thank and acknowledge David Walrath, who completes his twelve years as moderator today. I also want to note, ironically, elected at the same time, Jim Salvi completes his twelve years on the Select Board, which followed a few, at least two years at least, on Finance Committee. He served at least three of the years on the Select Board as chair. And I just want to add that in his tenure, he did a lot of advocating for the town, particularly track road, complete streets initially, maybe because he's a biker, but, you know, it's all good. It kept us moving. He guided the board to make the community center at Pompo a reality. And he served during the transitions as police and fire chief, and maybe most important, for our second only town administrator. So thank you, Jim, for all that you've done for the town. And on that note, Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn the meeting to the town election on May 21st, 2022, commencing at 10:00 a.m. at Center School in said town of Stowe, and then and there to act on Article sixty for such election of officers and ballot question, as listed in the warrant, and thereafter, at the close of the polls, to dissolve this meeting.
We have a motion in a second. We'll use the green cards. All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous in the auditorium and outside, how's the cafeteria?
Strongly in favor in the cafeteria.
Thank you very much for holding out to the end, everyone. Remember your clickers and green cards in the boxes, please. Oh, thank you.